City Council meeting is now reconvened. We'll note the time at 5:20. Is the city attorney still present? At this point, we'll have the city attorney announcing actions, if any, that were taken during closed session. In his absence, I'm an attorney and I'm in the city. And I'm just here to say we took no reportable action. Why are we paying him for this time? Yeah. Okay. All right.
That's all we needed him.
We don't need him at this time. Take it off the bill. All right. We'll now consider Council Business Item Number 2.1. Will the clerk please read the title of the item? We covered it already, Jim.
Consideration of a Request by Mayor Agron to Discuss Adjustments to Irvine's Power Profile Selection at Orange County Power Authority and Directing the City Manager to Issue a Notice of Intent to Withdraw from OCPA.
All right. Those participating via Zoom may now raise their hand electronically to enter the speaker queue. This item was agendized at my request. And I think we now want to have a presentation by the city staffs. Okay. Well, I'll tell you what. Let me then, while we're waiting for them to come and make a presentation, let's just report to the people here that we have, how many requests for citizens to be heard?
At this time, we have 50.
50, all right. That will mean that everybody will be given 90 seconds. And at the end of 90 seconds, when we get to that portion of the agenda, the clerk will say that time is up. And I'll, as presiding chair here, presiding officer, I'll try to give people a few seconds to wrap up, but please respect the 90-second limit. They were here a second ago. All right, the city attorney and city manager, city manager Chi, our city attorney is Jeff Melching, they will be making the city presentation on this matter at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Apologies for the delay. We were, had a couple of technical issues we were working through. The city clerk is getting the slides put up, and then we'll run through the issues at hand with regard to the item related to the power authority.
Mr. Chi, I'm going to ask you, I don't think, maybe it's just my microphone here, but if you could speak up just a little bit, we'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Certainly. Ooh, that worked better. They are getting resolved as we speak. I see our fabulous city clerk furiously working the system.
Incidentally, just by way of announcements and logistics here, although there'll be projection of the presentation on the big screen so that people here in the audience can see it well, we obviously don't have eyes in the back of our heads. We do have monitors in front of us, but I also like to make use of what is a large monitor at the base of this desk here ahead. So it's not, it's not that we're not paying attention, we're just looking at the same information from different perspectives. With that, are we ready to go?
I believe so. Okay. The, I think the issue with the Orange County Power Authority is an item that's been discussed many times in our council chambers. We wanted to provide the city, the issue related to the Orange County Power Authority has been discussed many times in our council chambers tonight. As the council contemplates the issues at hand, we wanted to provide everyone with some background information as relates to how we find ourselves here today again. With that, if we can go to the next slide. By way of background, as we flip to the next slide, the city of Irvine did spearhead the formation of the Power Authority, which started providing power to customers in 2022. Ultimately, I think everyone on the council is aware, as a CCA, what OCPA does is source and secure and purchase power at predetermined renewable levels for all of its customer base. And ultimately, the vision and the idea of forming OCPA, which again was spurred by the city of Irvine, thank you, really was geared towards identifying additional local control and creating local programs with respect to the electrical power program to see if we could develop lower electrical rates, if we could develop more renewable energy, and ultimately reduce greenhouse gas emissions. As the council is aware, back in 2022, we spent considerable time discussing OCPA. There was turmoil and controversy regarding the agency at that time. Around that same time, the city of Huntington Beach and the county of Orange, both of those entities decided to withdraw from OCPA. The concerns that were raised back in 2022 included staffing issues, leadership issues at the agency, there were transparency and operational competency concerns, and all of that was exacerbated by the fact that operating in the power market really is a complex, a complex thing to do. Power supply procurement is competitive, prices really are volatile, there's a very tight credit market for OCPA to work within. And given all of the audits and the turmoil that OCPA back in 2022 was faced with, the city spent considerable time contemplating whether or not we wanted to continue and maintain our membership within the agency. Ultimately, Irvine decided to stay. And for the past few years, OCPA has entered a relatively calm period, as we, along with Fullerton and Buena Park, have formed the backbone of the OCPA agency. Recently Fountain Valley has also voted to join OCPA. They'll start receiving power in October of 2026. Think one of the issues why this is such an important matter for the Irvine City Council to contemplate why we're so engaged in things related to the Power Authority, is the fact that the vast majority of the Power Authority services Irvine customers. 65% of all the customer base OCPA serves reside here in Irvine. We have about 115,000 accounts that have service, electrical service through the Power Authority. Fullerton has about 37,000 accounts. Buena Park has 24,000 accounts. Fountain Valley, which will begin receiving power in late 2026, has a touch under 19,000 That period of calm that we identified has recently hit some turbulence. Recently, in late 2023, it felt like everything was stabilized in, at OCPA. However, the course of the past several months, there have been several issues that have created additional concern for the Irvine City Council, and really for the staff also, as we've watched the different actions that OCPA has taken. First, there have been issues related to what appear to be a deliberate withholding and misrepresenting of electrical power cost details from the city of Irvine. We feel very strongly that OCPA has, for some reason, decided not to inform Irvine about significant decisions that could be adverse to our interests in protecting local ratepayers. Significantly, OCPA also recently considered imposing a new board policy that would severely restrict the ability of member agencies to make decisions for their own customer base. We wanted to run through a couple of those issues, really to provide context for why this issue is happening today, given that so many of OCPA's customers are Irvine-based residents and businesses, given the city council's intention to try and attempt to create advocacy for our local resident base, and given what OCPA has been doing recently, there are serious concerns, I think, that warrant consideration that should be addressed, even as we continue to push forward on sustainability-related initiatives. First, there's been financial challenges at OCPA that have not been disclosed to Irvine. We were told in November that the city had to make a decision by December 31st. That decision involved either switching all of our electrical customers into a new modified tier, base electrical tier, that provided 55% renewable energy. We were told if we didn't do that by December 31st, there'd be a significant electrical rate increase our ratepayers would experience. What's really important to note is, OCPA did not inform anyone from Irvine, including our appointed OCPA board members from Irvine, about this issue until November, and then quickly requested that a decision be made. That's why this issue was agendized by Councilmember Trecider in November for council review. As soon as she heard about the issue, as soon as it was brought to her attention, she wanted to bring the matter forward for full city council discussion. More recently, as staff has been analyzing the issues at hand, our team has had a chance to review financial documentation at the Power Authority, and we are convinced that OCPA staff was aware of the fact that they would be requesting significant changes to our power profile. They were aware of that months ago and didn't share that information with the city. Additionally, as the issue related to the rates that would have to be adjusted, and as the issue related to selecting a new base profile, electrical power profile, as that issue was thrown to the city, we haven't received very much information from OCPA to understand what was driving the issue and also what our options would be. There's a real strong sustainability tilt in Irvine, and we selected 100% renewable power as our base rate for a reason. OCPA did not provide the city with any information as related to what would it cost to keep people in that 100% renewable tier. They also didn't provide any details on other options outside of the one option to move people down to the 55% renewable energy rate tier. I understand that yesterday or today, that information was finally sent over for us to review, but again, the decision for OCPA to ask for us to make such an important decision without any information being provided, something that we think is a significant issue that should be addressed. We've had to reverse engineer, actually, all of the rate structures because we weren't provided that information. Our team in our administrative services department went and scanned every single electrical rate tier that's offered at Edison. We scanned all of the rate tiers that are offered by OCPA for both residential and non-residential accounts to try to back into what we think the rate increase would have been. The only information we were given to this point was a verbal disclosure from OCPA that the cost to maintain the 100% renewable tier would be an increase to basic rate plus three cents per kilowatt hour. We've estimated that cost to be about $210 more per year for the average resident that uses 520 kilowatt hours of electricity per month. We've also studied Irvine's impact, the city's impact, from that potential rate increase. That potential increase would add about $1 million a year to the city's electrical bills. As we were doing the analysis to try to back into what the potential rate structure would be, one additional issue that we identified was this overstatement of cost savings at the Power Authority compared with Edison. OCPA has consistently indicated that their basic choice plan would cost 3% less than SCE. There's a graphic on this slide that was snipped from the OCPA website that indicates basic choice plan costs 3% less than SCE. When you dig into the details, though, the fine print is that the basic choice plan offers 3% less than SCE's comparable generation rate. And when we aggregated all of the electrical costs, what we identified was the real cost savings compared with Edison, and that's a good thing, there's a cost savings, but it's less than 3%. It's actually about 1.2% to 1.5%, depending on which electrical program you're enrolled Here's a couple of spreadsheet snips that outline the analysis that we did, indicating that the OCPA basic choice plan, again, is a better cost option for residents and for businesses. The basic choice plan on the residential side is about 1.2% less based on our analysis. For non-residential service, it's about 1.5% less. Another issue that's a little harder to articulate specifically via documents, but is definitely something that the staff has identified, is there appears to be some sort of animus at OCPA towards Irvine. There was a special board meeting that the OCPA board held on December 6th, and at that meeting, representatives from OCPA really identified a negative perspective as it relates to Irvine, and actually articulated during a public meeting that there's a preference and a plan to not share information with Irvine, because there were concerns related to how Irvine would react if that information were given to us. The other issue that occurred at that special meeting that, from a staff perspective, really felt inappropriate, we, the OCPA board did put onto that special meeting agenda a conversation about potentially accelerating the repayment of the $7.5 million capital loan that Irvine made in order to launch OCPA. Given that there were, there was conflict occurring at the time, you could reasonably make an argument that potentially the OCPA board was attempting to address a question that the city council had made regarding repayment of that loan. However, given the background and the interface we've had with OCPA over the years, everyone is fully aware that once that loan is repaid, the city's two board seats get reduced to only one board seat. And in the context of the other discussion that was occurring, you could also infer from the matter that potentially OCPA was hoping to limit Irvine's influence at the OCPA board by trying to accelerate the repayment of the loan. The item that has caused staff the greatest concern, based on what OCPA has done recently, really is related to a policy decision that they contemplated also at that December 6th special meeting. There's a board policy at OCPA, Board Policy 23, and that policy currently stipulates that every member agency, every city, can select any base default rate for their community. At that December 6th board meeting, OCPA staff prepared a staff report and an updated Board Policy 23 that would have allowed, if it had been approved, would have allowed OCPA to unilaterally impose their own power profile preference on any member agency, irrespective of what that member agency selected. So an example would be, let's say a city joined OCPA to select basic choice as the default rate for the residents, because they wanted lower power, lower cost electricity. If this policy were to be approved, OCPA would have the right then to say, that's great that you made that decision, we're going to move all of you to 100% renewable, because that's what we would like to do. That's what the policy would have created. We think every member agency should be concerned about that potential policy shift. I mean, it's certainly something that should have warranted more discussion and more disclosure than simply 24 hours' advance notice. We've included a copy of what that policy is in the next couple of slides. And really, what the words of that policy stipulate are as follows. "OCPA's Board of Directors may determine that, in order to meet the fiscal, energy procurement, and operational needs of OCPA, certain OCPA rate products will not be available to one or more member agencies' its default rate products for a temporary period established by the Board of Directors. In such case, default rate product customers within identified master agency's jurisdiction will be placed into an alternate OCPA rate product as established by the Board of Directors." Really, that is a massive bait and switch and takes choice away from each city jurisdiction that's part of OCPA. In fact, we felt so strongly, the city wrote a five-page letter that we sent to the CEO of the Power Authority. Ultimately, Power Authority delayed discussion and consideration of the item. Those are the issues that have created the environment where we've had to have a special meeting this evening, started with OCPA's rushed request that we make a change in our default rate profile without providing very much information related to why and what our options would look like, and then a series of additional actions the past several weeks that have identified what appears to be at this moment, and a relationship between the city and OCPA that is strained. The council's memo that was, the memo that was published identified and asked for an overview of options to address the issues at hand, and we thought through these issues the past couple of days to provide the council with some context. From a staff perspective, I think definitely we need to see an improvement in the ability for the city and OCPA to work together. Enhanced transparency, better notification to the city regarding OCPA activities. At a minimum, you need to inform our director that the city council sends to the OCPA board about significant issues that are occurring, especially as they relate to impacts in Irvine. That's something that we think needs to happen for sure. Providing increased protections for Irvine and our ratepayers, given that we represent 65% of the customer base at OCPA, that doesn't seem like we're asking for too much. We do feel strongly that there need to be guarantees, and we think all member agencies should want guarantees from OCPA, that the OCPA board cannot override decisions related to base profile, base power profile selections made by a local elected city council. And ultimately, the repayment of the capital loan, that issue, there's an established schedule. We're certainly happy to talk to the representatives of OCPA about options, but to rush such a decision doesn't seem like that makes sense. And ultimately, in the context of currently there being some conflict between the two agencies, reducing and diminishing our influence at the OCPA board level is something the city council should certainly consider. We thought through possible ways to address the issues. There's two that come to mind. One is to continue to utilize all of the existing mechanisms that exist within the existing governance structure at OCPA to try and resolve our concerns. The other would be, as suggested in the mayor's memo, the opportunity to potentially leave OCPA, which is a discussion we've had in prior years on this particular matter. Utilizing our existing rules to advance OCPA reforms really involves utilizing our two board seats and really utilizing the fact that 65% of the customer base at OCPA are Irvine-based entities. Articulating all of the issues that we've seen and utilizing the structures that exist and our authorities on the board to try to drive reforms, that really is a maintenance of what we've been doing the past several years. I think OCPA and the board do deserve credit. There were multiple audits, multiple identified issues, and there have been improvements and reforms at OCPA. The issues that exist currently seem to indicate additional reforms should possibly and probably be made at the Power Authority. This is also the safest option for Irvine when you compare it against withdrawing, given that it doesn't create any liability concurrently, though. There isn't also very much leverage outside of, again, using the influence of our two board members to try to press for change. The other issue really is to consider voting to withdraw from OCPA. The OCPA JPA does allow Irvine to withdraw from the agency. The language in the JPA can be confusing. The bottom line of that is, if the city council makes a determination to withdraw by December 31st of a given year, that withdrawal can be effectuated and will be effectuated by June 30th of the following year. If the withdrawal notice is issued after December, if it's in January, then you'd have to wait 18 months, and it would be June of the year after in which the withdrawal would take effect. As an example, if Irvine provided notice by December 31st of this year, we could withdraw as early as July 1, 2025. If we withdraw January 1, 2025, we couldn't withdraw until July 1 of 2026, or excuse me, 2027. Considerations related to that potential withdrawal, there would be potential financial impacts if we did make that decision to withdraw. The JPA agreement indicates that if we do pull out of OCPA, any claims, demands, damages, or liabilities attributable to the party, in this case it would be Irvine, through the effective date of its withdrawal or early termination, those would be our responsibilities. We've had one example of a city withdrawal. That city was Huntington Beach, and ultimately, given what was happening in the power market at the time of their withdrawal, there was no financial impact for Huntington. That moment potentially exists right now, but we would need to do more work to identify, really, what that would look like moving ahead. One of the other issues that could complicate a withdrawal is if OCPA takes an adversarial position and isn't cooperative through that withdrawal process. It could hinder our ability to maximize our position as a city through the withdrawal process. And ultimately, we also want to make sure we're mitigating any impacts for our rate, electrical ratepayers. If we were to draw, withdraw, Irvine electrical customers would be transitioned back to Edison based on what's happening in the power market currently. Analysis we've done indicates Edison has a surplus of power, which should limit any potential impacts if we were to transition our customers back. That would be an item that we would do more work on if the council made the decision to withdraw. The last issue for the council to identify really is the issue that started this entire discussion. We also need to select a new base power profile for Irvine electrical ratepayers. The options that we have really are to remain in the 100% renewable energy tier, to drop into the middle tier, the smart choice plan, or to enroll our ratepayers into the OCPA basic choice plan. And ultimately, those decision points are outlined on this slide here. Ultimately, the options for continuing engagement with OCPA are to either, one, continue to work through the system as it currently exists, or to identify some process or some type of withdrawal strategy to enhance the leverage that we have to try to effectuate some of the changes that the staff level, we think, are definitely necessary. That decision coupled with selecting a new base power profile, those are the issues before the council this evening. And as we contemplate these matters, if the council has any questions, the staff is here and we're certainly available.
Thank you, Mr. Chief, for that fulsome report, laying out various options. At this time, what I'd like to do procedurally is invite my colleagues in a single round to pose questions to you or make comments and to, after that round... to pose questions to you or make comments and to, after that round, hear from people who have signed up to testify, to comment. And then the matter will be returned to the council for further discussion, consideration, proposals of motions or actions to be taken, further discussion, and finally, a vote. So mindful of that, we're all a little bit new to the new configuration up here. There is a button available called Request to Speak. And in the absence of other designation, I would just call people in the order that they request to be heard. For this first round, though, I'm going to suggest that if they wish to offer anything, our representative, council member Tressider, who has faithfully served as our city's representative to the OCPA, and that council member, Mike Carroll, who was instrumental in the formation of the OCPA and the long journey that we have been on. If they wish to speak first, I'd be happy to recognize them. If not, I'll just go down the line here. Council member Tressider, did you wish to be heard or counsel?
Yes.
Very well.
Yeah, thank you. So, thank you very much for agendizing the request to adjust our power profile selection. I appreciate that. In general, for OCPA, I am very pleased with this agency. It was founded by Irvine in connection with other cities. It was a grassroots movement that pushed for it. Many of the people who are here in the audience were there in the beginning. It's delivered a lot of renewable energy to Orange County, really helped Irvine meet our climate goals. And in fact, OCPA is central to our Climate Action and Adaptation Plan. This adaptation plan requires us to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions, and currently OCPA is about reducing them by about half as much as what we need. So it's half meeting half our goals. If we lose that, we will have to rewrite the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan, and it will be much more difficult. I want to get you some information that I got this afternoon. If we do not change our power profile mix for the default and don't do anything else, we maintain the status quo, unfortunately, power bills for our residents will go up. I personally do not want this to happen, but if we don't change our power profile, on average, let's say you're a customer who has a bill of about $192 a month and you're on the default plan of 100% renewable choice, well, your bill would go up by about $33 a month. If you were on smart choice right now and we didn't change our power profile, your bill would go up $31 a month. That is a lot, and I know that a lot of our residents are hurting. I don't want to do that to them. I believe that we should be reducing our default power mix. It is unfortunate because that means we would be providing less renewable energy as a default. On the other hand, we will be supplementing that renewable energy with carbon-free energy. So instead of just using fossil fuels for the rest of that energy, we would use energy that comes from, like, large hydroelectric sources. Technically not renewable, but doesn't add to climate change. In general, I think the OCPA is one of the better-run agencies in the county. We have worked really hard to make it smoothly running. It's actually financially very viable. I am proud of it. We do need to make some improvements, that is for sure, and I'll be talking about that later. But overall, I think that it's wonderful that we have this agency, and it helps us really meet our goals. And in addition, it really was the wish of the people who live in Irvine to do this. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member, Council member Carroll, did you wish to be heard at this time?
No, Mayor, thank you, other than just to say that I'm looking forward to hearing the public testimony and bringing it back to council and discussing it, so thank you.
Excellent. Any other of council members wish to be heard? Oh, there we are, Council member Mai.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Agron. You know, I really love choice. I think that people should have a choice, but it needs to be a transparent choice. We've received, as many of you here have submitted emails, over 200 emails, spoken to many groups over the past day, both sides. You know, we would welcome that, and you know, for me, I'm still looking forward to hearing the public testimony here, so thanks for coming out, looking forward to hearing from you.
Excellent. Well, with that, unless there are others who wish to be recognized, at this time, we'll turn to public comment. Again, how many requests do we have at this time?
We have 55 requests to speak.
55 requests. People will be given 90 seconds each. At the end of the 90 seconds, Mr. Peterson will tell you your time is up, and I'll try to encourage you to wrap things up. With that, Mr. Peterson, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. If I could call the first five speakers forward, Tomas Castro, The Grinch, Walter Nobrega, Charlie Jackson, and Dominic Ben Daneli, and we'll start with Tomas. You have 90 seconds.
Thank you. Good evening, council members. My name is Tomas Castro, and I stand proudly with the residents behind me who all want Irvine to have a future in OCPA. If I could address some of the points from the city manager's presentation, OCPA addressed the loan from Irvine simply because Mike Carroll asked them to. To suggest that they want to reduce Irvine's board member's seats by one is simply a gross mischaracterization. Opting down to smart or basic choice is still the best option that you can take. Let's also address the elephant in the room. Mayor Agron, you agendized the special meeting with 24 hours in advance because you know that this is not a popular decision you want to make. Irvine families want renewable energy, they want clean renewable energy, and you're trying to scrap this under the dark. This is simply an undemocratic meeting, and you should vote to not withdraw from Irvine today. A letter of intent to withdraw is the same as withdrawing, so please do not submit that to the OCPA. Whether you elect to go with the smart tier or the basic tier, families will benefit financially from this decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Next.
Hello, council members. As you can see, I am The Grinch. I came all this way to the Irvine City Council because I thought I was the only one stealing gifts from children this Christmas season. But now I saw the agenda for a special council meeting hosted only 24 hours in advance, and I knew I had to meet my competition. Mayor Agron, why are you trying to steal Christmas action from families in Irvine? You tried to withdraw Irvine from OCPA before, and you failed back then. Usually, when I fail to steal Christmas gifts, I don't go back to the same house to try again. If there's any advice I can give you, Mr. Mayor, it's to not be like me. No one likes a Grinch. These people are tired of you trying to steal their climate goals away through special meetings and parliamentary tricks. Stand with the people of Irvine and don't keep re-intergating this issue. The OCPA is good, even I wouldn't try to steal them away. In fact, all of Orange County is counting on Irvine to stay on OCPA and give the county a path to clean energy. Don't ruin it for everyone, don't be a Grinch.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Peterson, do you want to announce the names of the people as they come forward?
Absolutely. Mr. Nobrega.
Yes, Walt Nobrega. Good evening, Mayor, city council members, city staff. There is a group of people here tonight who will advocate for the OCPA. I am definitely not one of them. Most, if not all, of their information is exaggerated, scripted allegations, and some of their allegations are simply an attempt to mislead this council. Fact-checking proves that. The facts are obvious. Like, unlike council member Tressider's assertion that the OCPA delivers 96.5% renewable energy to all residences and businesses in the OCPA cities, they don't have, they don't deliver one electron to anyone, anyone's electric meter. In fact, on 12/8/2025, 24, only 33% of renewable energy was delivered to anyone's meter who was connected to the grid. Think about this. If you want to go to the store and you buy a loaf of bread and only got 1/3 a loaf, would you happily pay for a full loaf, or would you demand to get what you paid for? You are definitely not getting what you paid for from the Orange County Power Authority. Council members, I encourage you to vote to exit the OCPA tonight.
Thank you for your testimony.
Charlie Jackson.
Hi, I'm Charlie Jackson, a Huntington Beach resident. I no longer have a choice between OCPA and SCE, and I recommend that Irvine stays with OCPA so residents in Irvine can choose how they get their electricity. Before leaving OCPA, for political reasons, Huntington Beach changed the city's power usage to the basic plan to save a little money for the city and changed all residents to the basic level. As soon as I could, I changed back to 100% level. The point is, the default level can be set for political, environmental, and business reasons. Right now, Irvine is on the OCPA Board of Directors and has a lot of transparency and control in the operations. It can always be made better. Irvine has two members on the OCPA board, but no members at SCE. No visibility into SCE. When SCE changes rates arbitrarily, you have no say. OCPA is also becoming a focus for community activities. Transparency, control, and a focus on community activities, that's all important. These are some of the reasons why I think the city council has started to build a Irvine Public Library. The Irvine Public Library will be controlled by the city and it will be a focus for community activities. I recommend that Irvine stay with OCPA. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony and welcome.
Dominic, and then if I could also call forward David, Tiffany Lynn, Sheida, Doug Elliott, and James Ward. Go ahead.
Hello, Mayor, City Council. I'm Dominic Ben Daneli, an OCPA customer and Buena Park resident. I'm here today because I'm passionate about OCPA's mission and urge you not to withdraw from OCPA. To withdraw from OCPA would be revoking your constituents' right to choose their own electrical rates. Today, OCPA offers three electrical rates, including the cheapest option available to consumers in Irvine. Consumer choice is a foundational principle of capitalism, and the people of Irvine deserve that choice. They should not be mandated to pay SCE a fixed rate without options. While your decision will have a massive impact on Irvine, it also has grave implications for Buena Park, Fullerton, and Fountain Valley, not to mention the list of cities looking to join OCPA in the future. OCPA came to the city to offer solutions to continue and offer lower electrical rates to ratepayers. I, for one, am grateful they came offering solutions rather than increasing rates more and more without notice. If the city opts down to smart choice, consumers will, as always, have the option to change their plans at any time to any of the four plans offered to them today. I appreciate those options OCPA provides and their transparency with their customers. In closing, I'll pose a question to the council to consider. Has SCE ever come before the council to offer strategies to keep electrical rates low? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments and welcome. Who's our next speaker? David.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, hello. My name's David Martinez. First, I just wanted to go through this memo that was published with the agenda and just point out some flaws I see with it. I see that it says-
You're asserting flaws in my memo?
Yes, there are, in fact, flaws. It says 55% renewable power, and it doesn't include, as council member Tressider said, the 40% carbon-free that is included in there. I see $210 more annually, and I have no idea, quite frankly, no idea how this math was made. I see in here that it says 1.5 cent to 3 cent increase, and if you do that math, it just, I can't make that math work for the 210 more annually. I see here that it says, "OCPA called a special board meeting with only 24 hours' notice." In fact, I received the agenda over 40 hours in advance for that special meeting, unlike this one where I received no agenda in my email. So I don't see, I see many flaws in this memo, and I also appreciate the fact that some people might have some issues with policies that might be going on at OCPA, but you still have the chance to change that. A letter to withdraw, that is not something that will be able to be changed after it is voted on. So I encourage you all to not withdraw from OCPA and to instead adopt the recommendations of that agency. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your public comments. Tiffany Lynn, welcome.
Good evening, Irvine City Council members. My name is Tiffany. I currently work in the biomedical industry as a research and development associate. I majored in environmental science at UC Berkeley. Larry Agron, I heard you also went to UC Berkeley. Go Bears! But as a fellow Cal graduate, I am disappointed. I believe Irvine should stay in the OCPA. Research from our own alma mater at the Haas Business School shows that community choice aggregates have lower rates than investor-owned utilities. And that's true. The OCPA Basic Energy Choice Plan costs less than SoCal Edison and still offers more renewable energy. Why would you even consider removing Irvine from an energy choice program that is more affordable and better for our environment? OCPA puts renewable energy development at the forefront and gives a voice to the people in deciding where their energy comes from. SoCal Edison does not, period. We need to decarbonize now for our livable future. The people need cleaner, more affordable energy. OCPA is the best option we have to deliver that equitably. To withdraw from OCPA is to withdraw the people's choice. I urge Irvine to stay in OCPA. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Sheida.
Hello, good evening. My name is Sheida. I moved to Irvine 10 years ago, and I couldn't be happier living in this beautiful town. I love how Irvine is a leader in many environmental issues, and OCPA, for me, was an example of such initiatives. I love to care for the environment and having a choice. When it comes to utility selections, OCPA has been a great way to give our community exactly that. A choice and being public and transparent is the icing on the cake, especially when the lowest tier matches or lower than Edison. I would hate to see that going away for reasons that are not clear to me, maybe if the reasons for such an action was more clear. I wrote this before I read the PowerPoint, so with that, I have two, I have a little bit of time. I have two questions. One is that I wish somebody was here from OCPA to rebuttal some of the claims that are there, and I thought that nobody was providing the justification. At the same time, I would like to see the open market kick OCPA out of business if it comes to that. I would like for people to say, "I don't like OCPA, the price is too high, I'm going to go back to Edison." So I think that choice is being taken away if we withdraw Irvine from OCPA. So please keep OCPA and allow the open market model clears the way for success or failure.
Thank you for your comments. Before the next speaker, Mr. Chi, are there any representatives from OCPA present?
Yes, we have Susan Sane here. She's a council member from Buena Park and our vice chair.
On the board.
On the board.
On the board. But are there any staff people here? Anybody from OCPA that wishes to present? We certainly want to accommodate that.
I had reached out to the OCPA CEO yesterday. We weren't able to connect, and I'm not aware if they are going to be. I think they were trying to get somebody here. I'm not sure, council member Tressider, if you-
I believe the vice chair is, she wants to represent OCPA here.
Ah, okay. Is she, are you among the people who have signed up to be heard? Happy to give you more than, much more than 90 seconds if you'd like to come forward now or later, it's up to you.
Whatever you like.
Very well. What would you like?
I will answer questions or I will give my comments.
Why don't we take more public comments and then we'll hear from you, all right? Thank you.
Doug Elliott.
Thank you and good evening. I'm Doug Elliott, speaking only for myself. For the record, I'm a Community Services Commissioner, and for the past year, I've also served on OCPA's Community Advisory Committee. Congratulations, Mayor Agron and council members. I hope the next two- I hope the next two years will be productive and that maximum transparency and public participation will be the norm. That's not the kind of start we're off to. If OCPA called a special meeting on twenty-four hour notice, the city has now done the same. This meeting is unnecessary at this time. There's no emergency, nothing that couldn't wait for seven days' notice. Energy markets are volatile, as we all know. Nonetheless, OCPA is in sound financial condition and has healthy reserves. If that were not the case, they'd be in no position to offer to repay the loan early, as we've heard there was some discussion of. With basic choice, the city can purchase power from OCPA cheaper than it can from Edison, and so can Irvine's residents and businesses. So it makes no fiscal sense for Irvine to withdraw from OCPA. And it would be catastrophic for Irvine's sustainability goals. It's all about choice. So, please uphold community choice and give the consumer-
Thank you, your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Elliott, for your comments. Next.
James Ward, and if I could also call forward Roger Gloss, Danny Gray, Harvey Liss, Braden, and Ashay.
Hello, my name is Jim Ward, and I strongly feel that Irvine should remain in OCPA. Withdrawning is too drastic a move to make on such short notice. This could have a major effect on almost all the residents of Irvine, as well as affecting the residents of other cities in Orange County. They should have a chance to speak up on this issue before action is taken. It took a long time and a lot of hard work to get OCPA started, and this is not the way it should end. I see in Irvine Community News and Views that the OCPA Board recently recommended changes, but they did not recommend withdrawing. And I think the CEO should be here to explain their position and the consequences of exiting from OCPA. It is my understanding that he was not even invited to speak at this meeting, which just seems absurd to me. He should be here. We should know what the Board thinks. Also, what is happening with other community choice energy programs in the state, and how many of them are withdrawing? Please do not withdraw without allowing adequate time for input and analysis. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Roger Gloss.
Mr. Gloss, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Agron. Since 2002, community choice aggregation has helped move the needle toward renewable energy in many municipalities throughout California. I was co-chair of Orange County for Climate Action for five years. We lobbied hard since 2016 to bring community choice energy into Orange County. I agree that rooftop solar may be ultimately a better path to clean energy, but unfortunately, Southern California Edison, with the blessing of the CPUC, has de-incentivized residential rooftop solar under net metering 3.0. So we won't see widespread growth of rooftop solar anytime soon. CCE and staying in OCPA will help Irvine and Orange County meet their climate goals in the interim. Fullerton, Buena Park, and now Fountain Valley have opted into community choice under OCPA. They need Irvine's participation and purchasing power for CCE to succeed in Orange County. What I ask you to do instead of withdraw, don't take this drastic step. Slow down. Continue to work with OCPA to get through temporary solar price increases and whatever else isn't working. Reach out with OCPA to other cities and JPAs in California where CCE has been working for years. One more sentence.
Hold on. I'll be happy to extend your time a few seconds here if you'll conclude in the next ten or fifteen seconds.
I'm going to.
Go right ahead.
Irvine, one of the largest, most affluent cities in Orange County, sees itself as a leader in climate and the environment. Withdrawing from OCPA is not that leadership, and will set back renewable energy in Orange County for at least a decade. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Danny Gray.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council members and staff. My name is Danny Gray, and I reside in Capitol Beach. Sorry. I'm also a member of the Orange County Chapter of the Climate Reality Project. The climate crisis is not a hoax. Climate change is not coming in a decade, a year, a month, the next minute. It's right here, right now. And we are in the middle of it. For decades, many Irvine companies and their employees have developed technologies and products that benefit the world. Now it's time to roll up our sleeves and get to work on reducing greenhouse gas emissions. The rise of greenhouse gas emissions has put us into a climate crisis, and Orange County Power Authority is one solution that we have to address the climate crisis. I urge a no vote on Agenda Item 2.1 and encourage all of us to get busy addressing the climate crisis and figure out how the city of Irvine can honor its commitments. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Harvey Liss.
Welcome, Mr. Liss.
Thank you. I'm Harvey Lissa, resident of Irvine since 1976. By giving notification of the city's intention to withdraw from OCPA before December 31st of this year does not require, does not require the city to withdraw. It only provides the option to withdraw, providing six months to study the matter. Anyone opposed to this option is against the public interest. It will be suspected of having logic problems. Does not require the city to withdraw. Next, OCPA's supporters keep claiming that OCPA offers a three percent discount from the basic rate. That's totally false. This was pointed out by City Manager Chi's presentation. The three percent applies only to the generation portion of the bill, which is only forty percent of the bill. So the actual discount is roughly 1.2 percent. I'm currently getting a nineteen percent discount from Southern Cal Edison on their hundred percent renewables. And I've been getting a discount ever since I enrolled two years ago. It began at five percent. Every month, it has been increasing. OCPA has always charged a substantial premium for a hundred percent renewables. Why? Why? Makes no sense to me. Also, OCPA has really done nothing to meet our climate goals. Better to spend the money on solar panels. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Liss, for your testimony.
Braden.
I'm here speaking as an Irvine resident and former SCE customer turned OCPA customer. I'm a UCI graduate, and since 2022, I now live full-time here and work in Irvine as well. Withdrawing from OCPA would mean less choice for individuals. Irvine residents worked really hard to start the OCPA. We should not be calling a special council meeting to destroy that. I don't get why the Irvine City Council, or why there was the suggestion to take away my option. SoCal Edison would then be the only option. OCPA offers several tiers to customers, balancing price and renewable offerings. And I tried, when I was an SCE customer, to get on their clean energy plan. I was not able to. That's not an option. SCE is more expensive for individuals. The OCPA is already charging, is already cheaper for ratepayers, and SCE has already raised rates ninety percent over the last ten years. What happens if SoCal Edison is the only option? OCPA is also cheaper for the city. We lose 7.5 million in money we've already invested in OCPA. We lose millions of dollars in grant opportunities. Rooftop solar is also more expensive. If we want to pursue that seriously, we're wasting our money as well. The only winner in withdrawing from OCPA is SoCal Edison. Who wins if ratepayers are charged more? Who wins if our Irvine neighbors live under heatwaves, floods, and droughts? Who wins if the city spends more money to meet its climate goals? Who wins if the city needs more tax money now with CCE not being-
Thank you, your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Ashay Modi. And if I could also call forward Michelle Johnson, Margot Finlayson, Nancy Colacino, Kyler Chin, and Lisa B.
Go right ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Agron, esteemed council members and city staff. My name is Ashay, and I am a current student at Irvine High School. I implore the city council to stay in OCPA, protecting the choice of citizens to select between two energy providers. Irvine citizens deserve a voice in energy providers as their options directly impact families, the environment, and their community. Being one of twenty-five community choice aggregators in California, buying renewable energy to put onto the grid at a rate faster than for-profit utilities, OCPA accelerates the clean energy transition to reduce carbon emissions throughout the state. As a student, I deeply value Irvine's commitment to sustainability, knowing that the choices made today will determine what our community's future will look like. I am grateful for the strides that have already been made to further environmental goals and urge that the council keep OCPA instead of reverting to a single option and taking choice out of citizens' hands. Let's not give up our chance to lead a clean energy future. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Michelle Johnson.
Welcome, Ms. Johnson.
Mayor Agron and council members, my name is Michelle Johnson. OCPA made promises to the city of Irvine when they launched in 2022, including offering choice through local government control over energy procurement. But OCPA is really an energy trader, just like any other commodity like oil or gas. Irvine residents were not allowed to choose OCPA. They were forced into OCPA at the highest cost tier. OCPA doesn't transmit electricity. That's still Edison. Except now, OCPA can't afford to buy the energy they are charging our ratepayers for and want the council to unilaterally change the power mix for Irvine residents. While OCPA says this change will only last for two years, what kind of guarantees are they offering to predict the power market two years out? I think it's important to note that OCPA proposed changing the power mix with only Joe Mosca's authority, which is a clear violation of JPA Provision 4.4. At the Board Chair made clear at the 12-6 meeting that there would be no advance notice of any further changes to the power mix. I'm recommending the council tonight opt all ratepayers plus any new enrollments down to the basic choice option and notice OCPA that any changes in the power mix must have member-city approval. Two, notice OCPA are intent to exit at the earliest opportunity. Given Mr. Mosca's own announcement that all of their power contracts are in the money, there should not be any fees to exit. And finally, hire a-
Thank you, your time is up.
-firm with energy expertise. Thank you.
I'm sorry, what was that last comment?
To hire a law firm that has energy expertise to help us with the exit. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Margot.
Good evening, Mayor Agron and council members. My name is Margot Finlayson. I'm currently a resident of Hotel Rant, but previously, I was a fifteen-year resident of Irvine, and I have worked with and volunteered with Irvine nonprofits and for-profits for over thirty years. And during that period, I got a really strong connection to Irvine. I have respected Irvine as an environmental leader, in fact, the preeminent environmental leader in the county. One of the things that, one example of this was starting the Power Authority and choosing as a city a one-hundred percent renewable default. That was not OCPA's decision, that was the city's decision. When I moved to Irvine in 1991, there was no choice for energy. It had to be the investor-owned monopoly SCE. I had no choice. Irvine's leadership with and participation in OCPA, with that leadership, OCPA completed its twenty-four-point improvement plan and now has ample reserves to, and is financially solvent in a position to weather volatility in the energy market. It's even bringing new members in, as we've seen. Now is not the time to take a step backwards and relinquish the city's mantle as an environmental leader.
Thank you, your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony.
Nancy Colacino.
Welcome.
Long time.
It's been a while.
As a long time citizen of Irvine, I strongly support staying with Orange County Power Authority, and for several reasons. OCPA offers real alternative energy as opposed to Southern California Edison's increasing rates to enrich their shareholders and the CEO. I much prefer that OCPA gives back to the community and has city representative board members. OCPA is proactive and flexible enough to adjust user rates and thus save money. They came with a problem and a solution. You know, timing could be better, but sometimes that's what happens in life. Basically, we're in this together to decrease the use of fossil fuels while managing user costs. So, we shouldn't be adversaries. OCPA is affordable. Their basic rate is cheaper than SCE. I guess we can debate how much, but it's true. And with more, and those who want to adjust their energy levels up, let's say, back up, they could do that. So, I think that's choice. And to my new representative from District Three, Councilman May, Mai.
Thank you, your time is up.
Why don't you take ten seconds to finish up your remarks?
I just want to say, please take your time, and also Representative Lou, to really learn about the project and whether this should happen, rather than do it suddenly, because I don't think that's really a good decision.
Thank you for your comments.
Kyler Chin.
Good evening. Time is running out to save our planet. Twenty thousand people are currently evacuated in Malibu, staying in hotels in LA while their homes face the flames. There will be more fires, more floods, and more extreme weather. SCE has consistently raised rates, lined the pockets of Wall Street billionaires while price gouging our communities. We will not go back. SCE has told the state that it caused the mountain fire. They have no incentive to protect the working class or the planet, and they will continue to burn fossil fuels as long as possible, fracking and making the water unsafe to drink and making the air toxic. We will not go back. This mayor has no plans to meet our climate goals when rooftop solar costs two to three times as much as OCPA solar. We have a duty to this planet and to our next generation, my generation, to protect a hundred percent carbon-free power, to create good union jobs, to invest in young people looking in trades, looking for jobs in wind and solar. Do the right thing. Stand with us to create a better future. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Lisa B. And if I could also call forward Mike Roth, Anker P., Vicky Johnson, Lita Jenny, and Tom Osborne.
Good evening, council. My name is Lisa, and I am a student and citizen. I just want to state that OCPA is the fastest path to clean energy for Irvine. Without OCPA, Irvine will fall short on its climate action and adaptation plan goals. Community solar can't replace OCPA. Southern California Edison has made solar unaffordable for most residents through harmful policies, and their green rate is a misleading force. OCPA, on the other hand, provides scalable renewable energy that can significantly reduce emissions. If Irvine exits OCPA, we will lose millions in grant funding for vital projects like creating solar programs and expanding public transit. Also, Larry Agron uses the Irvine Community News and Views to spread misinformation about the OCPA and create false opposition in other cities. Agron quotes Jim Phelps, a paid lobbyist for big utilities, to cast doubt on community choice energy. Despite admitting his lack of expertise in energy policy, Agron continues to push for ending OCPA, questioning his notice and credibility. Please consider the OCPA and think about renewable energy as an action to tackle climate change. Thank you.
Thank you for taking the time to offer your comments. Thank you for taking the time to offer your comments tonight.
Mike Roth?
Welcome, Mr. Roth.
Good evening, I'm Mike Raoul. I urge you to vote tonight to withdraw from OCPA and downgrade the city default to basic choice. On November 26, OCPA shocked the city council by suddenly announcing OCPA faces a $125 million shortfall and needs to reduce the renewables for Irvine from 100% to 55%, or raise rates costing the average resident $210 per year more. City council didn't roll over and immediately agree, so a week later, on December 6, OCPA drafted policy challenges so that OCPA, not the city council, not the city of Irvine, gets to choose the default, the power mix, the prices, as they please. I'm a mathematician, I went to their December 6 board meeting and asked about their assumptions, margins of errors, and analyses for the scenario they presented to Irvine. OCPA answered none of my questions. Since OCPA started service in Irvine in 2022, they've been charging every resident about $100 more per year than SCE. OCPA refuses to open their books to show what power they buy. They accumulated $90 million instead of giving refunds or lowering rates. OCPA has betrayed the trust of Irvine. OCPA can't be fixed. Vote to withdraw tonight.
Thank you, thank you for your public comments.
Vicki Johnson?
Next.
Good evening, I'm Vicki Johnson. Vote tonight to withdraw from OCPA. It's moving backwards environmentally, trying to force Irvine from 100% renewables into 55% renewable default. OCPA is a startup that cannot be fixed because it's in a locked structure that's fundamentally flawed. When the county of Orange left OCPA, a supervisor said, "I don't trust that the county can fix its systemic operational problems." After millions in fines filed audits by the state, county, and city, OCPA did not meaningfully reform itself. OCPA's current CEO, CFO, and other personnel were hired by the original fired CFO, Probowlski. OCPA has retained its original consultants and energy providers like BKK, Pacific Energy Advisors, Shell, et cetera. Its operational structural flaws are compounded by the malformed JPA, a broken energy cost structure, we see the consequences today, locked-in contracts, unhedged positions that put the city of Irvine and OCPA in a very risky, unnecessarily risky, position. OCPA can't be fixed. It's just a paper-trading middleman. It wants to lower its energy quality and disempower Irvine even more. Vote tonight to withdraw.
Thank you, your time is up.
Thank you for your comments.
Lita Jenny?
Welcome.
Hi, I'm Lita Jenny. I'm a current resident of Irvine, I live in University Park, and a customer of the Orange County Power Authority since its inception. I'm a strong advocate of having consumer choice for cleaner electrical energy, and OCPA offers that. When I first moved here and tried to sign up for the green rate program with SCE, it was not available, and it's still not available. For their 5 million, approximately 5 million accounts that SCE has in their service area, they only have about 3,000 accounts enrolled in their green rate program, so that's such a small portion of our population. We definitely need OCPA to continue. Consumers should have a choice and not a monopoly by only having Southern California Edison supply their electricity. In addition, SCE renewable energy plans, I said that, are not open for enrollment at this time. And I didn't sign up for, excuse me, OCPA to get a cheaper rate. I signed up because I wanted to help us get towards our climate goals, and that's still my, what I want to do. And people have a choice, they don't have to stay with OCPA, and they don't have to stay with 100% renewable choice, I mean, 100% renewable energy. People have a choice. As long as we keep both, both options, then you can choose which level you want with OCPA. It's not a mandate. And the decision to stay in OCPA ensures ratepayers have a voice in the energy decisions that directly impact their lives.
Thank you, your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Tom Osborne, and if I could also call forward Jane Jung, Ginger Osborne, Andrew Gregson, Melissa Mazri, and Susan S.
Welcome.
Good evening, I'm Tom Osborne, I live in the city of Laguna Beach. I chaired the work group that wrote our Climate Protection Action Plan that was adopted unanimously by the city of Laguna Beach in 2009, and is still in force, and it is being upgraded as we speak. I'm here tonight to urge you to stay within the OCPA, to have a higher mix of clean energy at affordable prices. That's precisely the reason that more than 200 cities and counties in the state of California are members of organizations or agencies like this one, like the Orange County Power Authority, to have community choice energy as their option. This is considered to be the state-of-the-art approach, I think, for local government. And when I think of local government and state-of-the-art approaches, Irvine comes to my mind first and foremost. This, you, your city has set the gold standard for environmental practices as far as I'm concerned. And if you withdraw from the OCPA, think of how much harder it's going to be for other cities to come onboard, because what you decide tonight is going to have reverberations
Thank you, your time is up.
Throughout the entire county. Do the right thing. Be on the right side of history.
Thank you. Jane Jung?
Hi, my name is Jane Jung. My family has lived in Irvine for over 40 years. Since that time, the average global temperature has risen at a rate about twice as fast as the previous century, with record-breaking heat happening in the last few years. The destruction caused by climate change is not a cheap energy bill. OCPA has reduced 2 billion tons of carbon emissions in just two years. Let's make no mistake, this is the most important fact. The energy business can change its procedures around rate policy disclosures, it can perhaps change its marketing policies, it can perhaps add guarantees. It's for Irvine to work together with the OCPA without always threatening to separate. My questions to city council are straightforward. Is it better for Irvine residents to use more clean energy or not? Is it better to reward those who set higher environmental standards or not? The younger generations can't wait for a flimsy answer. It's important to have a backbone to stand for what's right for Irvine residents, and especially the next generations. Continue to participate with the OCPA. Thank you.
Thank you. Ginger Osborne?
Thank you for your comments. Welcome.
Yeah. I'm Ginger Osborne, and I'm here because the decision that you make tonight will affect me and future generations. I know that that is a bold statement, so let me explain. First, I am motivated to address you tonight because of the deteriorating climate, because my grandchildren have already been affected by having their school closed because of toxic smoke from a fire 200 miles away. I have a responsibility to protect them and future generations. Why is Irvine's action tonight so important? For the last several decades, the city of Irvine has been the model for smart environmentalism for all of Orange County, a position previously held by Laguna Beach. A capstone of your environmental leadership is being a founding member of OCPA. As Irvine goes, so many cities in Orange County. Getting cleaner energy through OCPA seems like a no-brainer to me. When Irvine can stay in the OCPA, move to a more affordable option, and get cleaner,
Thank you, your time is up.
Cheaper energy than SCE. So I'm asking that Irvine do the right thing tonight and protect our children and grandchildren Thank you. From the more extreme effects of climate change.
Thank you for your comments.
Andrew Gregson? Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, city council. Congratulations on those who just got elected. As a longtime resident in District 4, I appreciate the opportunity to address you all this evening. Irvine's high cost of living makes it virtual, sorry, virtual for residents to have the options to allow us to save money. For years, we have been limited choices as key services such as, until Irvine Company enabled Google Fiber as an infrastructure here in the city, and for my household alone that has saved us hundreds of dollars annually, while also providing a more reliable internet, which in today's world is definitely a stable and welcome thing. When it comes to renewable energy, let's be realistic. No provider can guarantee 100% delivery. But the existence of a choice, even imperfect, fosters competition and serves as a community's economic health. To withdraw from OCPA without consulting residents and business communities, the very people who are footing the bill, takes away our option to either opt in or opt out. It's not, sorry, that's not only undemocratic, but also leaves us at the mercy of a monopoly against others. I urge the council to explore a more inclusive approach, perhaps through a residents poll before making such a consequential decision. Let us ensure that we keep power of choice in the hands of Irvine ratepayers. Thank you very much, good evening.
Thank you for your comments, and next, Melissa Mazri? Welcome.
Hi, thank you. I am Melissa Mazri, a teacher and head of a local science department. I lost money to be here today because I had to cancel tutoring because of the poor timing and the lack of notice. I wrote about the many, I have actually written about the many issues with OCPA in 2022 when Mike was chair, and need to emphasize that the recent audits from the OC Department of Justice have cleared the current OCPA of every issue they had in that time, in their infancy. Canceling Irvine's participation in OCPA will negatively impact me financially, as the base rate I now pay is less than anything available from SCE. This will also mean removing that savings ability from local businesses. Those who already own their homes with solar panels will be negatively impacted as well, as they will get 10% less credit with SCE and lose access to them too. They will also no longer be eligible for the many incentive programs from OCPA. The ability to contribute to clean energy tech expansion is very important to me as a science teacher and environmentalist, as it will be to many people wanting to buy homes to get here in Irvine, to get away from pollution in their home countries and cities. That's already happening. I do not want to give money to a fossil fuel company who continues to drill and lobby to destroy our ecosystems. Please do not take that choice away from me. If you don't like it, opt out. Leave me my free market. Leave me my freedom to choose. As Adam Smith said, les effets, s'il vous plaît. Les effets. Adams, and reject
Thank you, your time is up.
What Adam Smith calls, the wretched spirit of monopoly.
Thank you for your comments, and now we welcome Councilmember Sontag?
Sonny.
I'm sorry, Sonny, forgive me.
That's okay.
And feel free to take more than the 90 seconds. You're the closest thing to an OCPA representative other than our own member, Councilmember Trecider tonight, and while everyone is granted the 90 seconds, feel free to take more time if you would.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Honorable mayor, city council members, thank you for the opportunity to address you here tonight, and congratulations on your recent elections. My name is Susan Sonny. I am a council member in Buena Park and the current vice chair of the Orange County Power Authority Board. Except for a few months last year, I have been on that board since OCPA was founded in December of 2020. The last time I was in this building was four years ago for the inaugural meeting of the Orange County Power Authority. I was a new council member, passionate about climate change and environmental issues, intrigued by the possibility of providing cleaner and cheaper energy to my community along with programs to support green infrastructure for our children's future through a JPA that offers us a local voice. While working with my council to secure support for becoming a founding member of OCPA, I had many conversations with the first chair of OCPA, Councilmember Mike Carroll. I was comforted by your warm assurances that Irvine had the same commitment to the environment, that you were committed to this organization and wanted our partnership and our participation along with other cities, that we could join in complete confidence that our cities would not have any financial liability unless we chose to opt out after the initial opt-out period, and that each city would have a voice and a vote on the board. I and Buena Park still enthusiastically support this enterprise, and we hope that you also still feel the same way. Running OCPA is complex, and we have some of the best staff in the country. The recent discussions of a short-term change of tiers is a standard management discussion of energy providers, and is the healthy and smart way to keep OCPA in the great financial shape that it is in with the transparency expected by oversight organizations. Please know that if you do submit a letter of intent to withdraw, both the CPUC and the JPA agreement do not allow for anything other than the completion of the withdrawal. I would suggest, especially for the benefit of the new council members, that you begin a discussion with OCPA so that everyone can fully understand all of the implications and impacts that could come with a letter of intent to withdraw, so that you are armed with every bit of information you need to make the best decision for the future of the environment, for your residents, for the residents of your partners in this endeavor, and for Orange County. And I'm happy to answer any questions. As a board member, I will also say that it is an honor to serve with Director Trecider. Her knowledge, her passion are inspirational to me personally, and I, it's been a great joy, and I consider her expertise and her seniority on that board to be very critical to the coming year of leadership at OCPA, and I hope that she and I continue to get to work together in that regard.
Thank you. Maybe we could have you remain at the podium if you would, and if there are questions that council members have, or if we might be able to clear up anything. I wanted to ask our city attorney about the letter of intent and withdrawal, and you made a very strong statement in that regard. Would you wish to comment, Mr. Melching, as to whether our hands are tied or not tied with respect to such a letter?
Thank you, mayor. First, I think ultimately it depends on the form of the letter, how it's delivered, when it's delivered, that all impacts the effect of the delivery of a letter or a notice, is actually how it's described under the JPA agreement. Second, the council member is correct, the board member is correct, the JPA agreement doesn't speak to the ability to rescind a notice once it is given. On the other hand, the parties to the notice are the city and the JPA, and if they want to agree among themselves to rescind a notice, they certainly have the ability, as a matter of contract, to do that. With regard to the California Public Utilities Commission process, my understanding is, is that, not that a rescission of a notice is forbidden, but not that a rescission of a notice is forbidden, but rather that the PUC regulations are silent on that question. I did have a discussion with the OCPA's general counsel yesterday that covered some of this topic, and I believe, I don't want to put words in that person's mouth, but I believe that what I'm reciting to you is consistent with what he and I discussed.
Thank you. Did you wish to respond back in that regard?
No, just that all of the information I've received from anyone of knowledge that I communicate with is that the C, once the letter is filed, Orange County Power Authority, if it receives a letter of intent to leave the power authority, is required to submit that notice of intent to the CPUC, and that the CPUC does not allow a reversal if it receives that. So unless we had someone here from the CPUC to respond to that, I'm not sure that we could resolve that difference of opinion.
All right. I just want to be clear about one thing. We are being requested by OCPA. We're being requested to lower our tier from the 100%, which was voted upon by this, by a previous city council, to a lesser tier. That, let's be honest, means dirtier energy, notwithstanding the fact that we'll get some from nuclear and some from hydro and so forth. It's not something that we're pushing. We were requested because there is volatility and some financial distress, let me put it that way, in the entire electricity market. That's why this is all happening. Am I correct in that regard?
I'm of the opinion, as a board member and as a city representative, and from my discussions with people from other CCAs, that these are the types of decisions that are made by the board of the JPA. We would be a bit surprised if your representative to the sanitation district came back and said the sanitation district is going to make these kind of changes and they're going to affect our city in this way and this way, but Irvine or our, my city or anyone's city should be able to overrule that. We select our representatives to these boards and we trust that they will represent us in the best way, not only for the benefit of the city, but for the organization itself. So this short-term option that we were offered, not that we ever want to have energy that is the tiniest bit dirtier. We would be thrilled if every single person was on 100% renewable energy, but we're also cognizant about the financial implications to all of our residents. And so looking at this particular option looked like the best compromise, if you will, to not have to charge people for this, the excessive rising cost for renewable energy while still remaining as clean as we possibly can.
So you're trying to manage a volatile market here, deal with the consequences of volatility in the market, which suggests a level of risk in this entire enterprise. We're at the mercy of forces sometimes beyond our control. But I want to make it clear, we're being asked by OCPA to opt down to a lower tier for our businesses and residents. It's not something that we're going ahead and doing. We're being asked. So to suggest that we don't give a damn about the environment or whatever, it's kind of nonsense. We do. We were and are 100% city.
Clearly Irvine has been a leader in environmental action in the county of Orange. That's a well-known fact.
All right. Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? I really appreciate your being here tonight.
Of course.
Thank you.
Happy to.
Yes, Councilmember Trecider.
Thank you. I just want to thank Vice Chair Sonny for being here. It was a long drive. She's very committed, wanted to be sure to be here to communicate with us. I do want to point out that she and I really support each other, really appreciate each other, glad to have her on the board with me.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next.
Thank you. If I could call forward Alan Meyerson, Don Geller, Max Wong, Zen Zhang, Keith Linker, and Mona. And we'll start with Alan Meyerson.
Good evening, councilmembers. Alan Meyerson. I have a lot of questions on my mind right now, if I can remember them all. I've heard the word transparency quite a bit tonight, and after listening and watching the city manager's presentation, it seems like there wasn't a lot of transparency from OCPA in that, because they were withholding information since September and the city didn't find out about it until the end of November. So that wasn't very transparent, and it suggests a lack of trust in the way I look at the OCPA. I've heard a lot of people concerned about the environment as I am, but I don't hear anybody on the other side of the aisle who wants us to stay in the OCPA complaining that they're asking us to opt down to dirtier energy. I don't hear them complaining about that, and that to me suggests a lack of ability by the OCPA to foretell what the market's going to be. They say it's only for two years, but how do they know what's going to be in two years? They didn't see this coming, so I don't know what they're going to see in two years. The other thing I wanted to mention was, by the way, another gentleman mentioned union jobs. SCE jobs are union, OCPA jobs are not union. I just wanted to clear that up. And I am on 100% green with SCE, and I'm very happy with it.
Thank you for your comments. Don Geller, welcome, Mr. Geller.
Good evening, Don Geller. Longtime resident of Irvine, and I also serve on the Irvine Finance Commission, but I'm speaking just for myself. There are three items that are distinct and mutually exclusive that need to be decided. Number one, let's get out, let's get our $7.5 million loan back. This is a no-brainer. OCPA can't afford to pay us back. We should take the money. We should make ourselves whole. Number two, we should reduce all Irvine customers, residential and businesses, to the smart or preferably the basic rate, and let the customers decide to opt up to a more renewable rate. This is the choice in community choice. Number three, you guys need to decide whether to give notice to OCPA, to withdraw, giving them a six-month window to straighten themselves out. But regardless of what you do, and this is a tough decision, I think everyone can admit that there are issues with the OCPA. For example, it's obvious that OCPA's power purchase agreements were not adequate to cover the 100% renewable tier, and now OCPA is either forced to raise their rates much higher than OCPA or lower their promise to their customers of purchasing cleaner energy, both being the antithesis of the CCA model. If you can give me another few seconds here.
Yes, please.
OCPA could have provided many more benefits, such as creating or subsidizing a solar rooftop program, but instead they offer a paltry 10% more net surplus compensation than SCE, which amounts to pennies. They could and should do much more, such as accommodating net metering 2.0, which will allow much more solar rooftops to be installed. OCPA can and should do much more for our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Geller, for your comments.
Max Wong.
Good evening, Mayor Agron, city council members and city staff. My name is Max Wong. I am a District Three resident in Northwood and a returning member of the Irvine Finance Commission, though the opinions I express are my own. I'm here today to ask you to vote no on withdrawing from the OCPA. From what I can tell, the primary and only benefit of withdrawing is the city guarantees its $7 million bond is paid back. This is at the cost of potential legal liability, as the city manager mentioned, fewer choices to Irvine city residents, and the most affordable option available to residents no longer being available. And this is a $7 million bond that is currently not at risk and has been successfully paid back to date. While OCPA has had a rocky history, the agency is now on stable financial footing. OCPA's latest financial statements show this. Ending June 30th of this year has shown a net positive position of $44.8 million, substantially more than the bond payback needed, and up $6.3 million from the year prior, a result of an operating surplus. This is a substantial reserve, and it shows that the agency is able to operate in the black, remain liquid, and repay this bond to the city. Finally, I believe that this decision shouldn't be made with greater consideration than at a special meeting.
Thank you. Your time is up. Take a few seconds more and wrap it up. Thank you.
And I do not believe it should be made two days after the seating of a new council. So I ask you to maintain energy choice in Irvine by voting no on withdrawing. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Wen Zhang.
Good evening, City Councilwoman Mayor Agron. My name is Wen. I've been an Irvine resident for six years. I'm here today to emphasize the importance of staying in the OCPA. OCPA basic choice would offer better rates than SoCal Edison while giving the options for residents to decide their energy sources. I choose to pay more for renewable energy, and that choice matters to me because the future of our planet matters to me. SCE currently does not offer me that choice. Please consider staying in OCPA and working through the current concerns rather than abandoning it. Thank you.
Thank you. Keith Linker, welcome.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. Keith Linker, ten-year resident, ten-year proud Irvine resident. Speaking toward the end of public comment has its advantages. Everybody's done heavy lifting for me. So it saves me the effort of pointing out the major benefits of OCPA and major downsides of withdrawal, since they've already been pointed out. It also saves me the effort to legitimately ask or question a need and point out the lack of urgency in calling a special session. So to save everyone's valuable time, I'll simply say do the right thing, oppose withdrawal from OCTA, and focus our energy on improving an already solid agency. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Mona.
Good evening. I didn't think I was going to see you twice in one week. Very quickly, I have more questions after today's hearing from the presentation that there's a contentiousness that's happening between OCPA and the city of Irvine. We know, and people have talked about not having representation of OCPA here. OCPA has been here. They've done their presentations. If people would come to city council meetings, they would learn more. So don't come on one issue. Come to learn every time. I listen to people reading script after script, it's scripted. There is no transparency. We are, like the mayor said, they're asking us to lower the rate. We're still using SCE Edison for the delivery. We are paying more, if you are with OCPA. How it started, we were forced into it and we had to opt out. And out of the 115,000 people from Irvine, and we're the moneymakers for OCPA, that's why they're fighting so hard, out of the 115,000, how many of those people know that they are using OCPA? People are being put into OCPA without their knowledge. So let's think about that.
Thank you for your public comments. Mr. Peterson, keep going.
Our next speaker is Huda Gamboa. Huda, you may unmute your mic.
Good evening. My name is Yutal Wadikka-Gamboa. Congratulations to the new council. I'm the immediate past president of Irvine Rotary. One of Rotary's seven areas of focus is the environment. Along with Rotary International, I deeply care about the environment and have been a climate advocate for many years. However, I speak here for myself and not for Rotary. I'm also one of the early climate activists of Irvine promoting CCE in the city. I am strongly convinced that with the current CEO, Joe Mosca, at the helm of OCPA, and along with his expert team, it is in very competent hands. He was a founding member and former chair of the Board of Directors of San Diego Community Power, California's second-largest CCE. He is passionate about clean energy and environmental sustainability and believes that CCEs can help move communities toward a healthy, clean energy future. We want to continue the same for Irvine. I had the pleasure to meet him and many of OCPA's team in person, listen to their plans, and hear about the cost-effective renewable energy that is being provided to Irvine and the other cities' residents. Regarding transparency, all OCPA's board meetings have been recorded and are available for...
Thank you. Your time is up.
Okay.
Yes, why don't we extend your time just a little bit here?
Thank you. In my opinion, leaving OCPA would be fiscally and environmentally irresponsible. With OCPA, Irvine residents are in control of where their electricity is purchased and what kind of source they opt in for. We need to meet the mandate of the state's Climate Adaption Plan. OCPA, as of now, is Irvine's sole path to energy choice, relatively stable rates, and a clean energy future. Leaders should strengthen it, not withdraw from it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Our next speaker is Jill Hargis. Jill, you may unmute your mic.
Thank you. I am very strongly opposed to any action to withdraw from OCPA. OCPA is the key way Irvine and Orange County can transition away from fossil fuels and to safer, cleaner, more affordable renewable energy. As a political science professor, I want to emphasize that it is a fundamental responsibility of government to support infrastructure changes that will provide for our future generations. If Irvine leaves OCPA, we lose that key tool to do so, and it will mean that Irvine and residents and OC residents will be left behind with expensive, outdated energy resources. After watching the presentation from Mr. Chi, which I appreciate, I saw nothing, absolutely nothing, that justifies any action toward withdrawal. The questions from the mayor about the letter and the technicalities of whether it could be okay to submit it raise many questions about his motivations and are frankly very Any, there are so many reasons. This is a very consequential decision, not just for Irvine, which of course is important, but it sounds to me like this, the OCPA is making energy more affordable for its residents. But like any consequential decision, it should be dealt with democratically...
Thank you. Your time is up.
...and should not be made in one meeting. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Our next speaker is Talema. Talema, you may unmute your mic.
Hello. My name is Talema Nuwa. I am an Irvine resident of four years and an Orange County resident of 23 years, and I would like to strongly urge the council members to vote to remain in the OCPA. A notice of intent of withdrawal is an extremely radical move and would be nearly impossible to reverse as discussed previously, and is therefore not a proper negotiation tactic. If cost is a concern, Irvine can opt into one of the lower-cost tiers, leaving consumers with a choice other than the Wall Street monopoly that is Southern California Edison. Additionally, Irvine's exit from the OCPA would likely end the OCPA altogether, as Irvine represents 65%... as Irvine represents 65% of the users' base. This takes choice away not only from Irvine residents, but from residents in every Orange County city that is part of the OCPA and every city that wishes to be a part of it. A decision to leave the OCPA would be misinformed at best and deeply selfish at worst. And I consider this entire meeting, this last 24-hour notice meeting, deeply undemocratic. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Mr. Peterson.
Our next speaker is Jocelyn Rabbit Sire. Jocelyn, you may unmute your mic.
Good evening, Mayor Agron, city council members and staff. My name is Jocelyn Rabbit Sire. I'm an alumnus of UC Irvine and a current resident of Huntington Beach and a lifetime citizen of Orange County. I'm here to urgently request that you vote no on Agenda Item 2.1. Nearly two years after I came here virtually with just about the same request on precisely the same agenda item, down to the number 2.1. Back in 2022, your city, like my city, was embroiled in controversy over what was then an embattled OCPA struggling with subpar leadership. My city made the regrettable choice in 2023 of pulling out of OCPA, and we are now dealing with the consequences. Meanwhile, your city made the admirable choice to stick with the agency through some difficult times and are now reaping rewards for your residents' businesses and improving the quality of your community overall. It is hard to comprehend why you would be returning to the same decision now, two years later, when the agency is in such a strong position in its operations, in its leadership, and in its financial standing. I do appreciate the presentation manager Chi made, laying out concerns with the
Thank you, your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Our next speaker is Dylan Slaton. Dylan, you may unmute your mic.
Hello, I'm Dylan. I'm a chemical engineering student, and as a part of that, I do a lot of math. But I don't have to do any math to tell you that this clearly reactionary and realistically irreversible decision of withdrawing from OCPA is guaranteed to raise prices on the people of Irvine because Edison, a private company, would be the only alternative, meaning they would have a monopoly on the entire city and monopolies price gouge. And I find it hard to believe that this isn't the point because I've barely heard anything good about Edison today just trashing on OCPA from people who do support the withdrawal. And Edison has increased their rates by nearly double in the past decade, and they'll only get higher. And as a chemical engineering student, I could tell you that renewables are only getting cheaper, and fossil fuels, they're not going anywhere. And what's more is that the withdrawal is not going to help us achieve Irvine's cap goals to mitigate the climate crisis. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Our next speaker is Vi Nguyen. Vi, you may unmute your mic.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Oh, hi. My name is Vi Nguyen. It's Nguyen in Vietnamese. I'm so proud to be a part of the American Academy of Pediatrics, and I take care of kids. I just really want to remind everyone as a pediatrician that renewables are better for kids, right? And asthma disproportionately, everything affects kids more, and it's not fair to them, and I'm here to speak on behalf of them. And you know what happens? You're there. It's really important to the Vietnamese-American community. There are many of us who are leaders in the health side, and it's a cultural home of the Vietnamese-American community, right? And so I'm really worried about the kids, and asthma affects Vietnamese kids more. And our family has a little hotel, a motel across from Knott's Berry Farm in Buena Park, and we'd like to keep the choice. We'd like to buy renewable energy. And what happens there affects our family's business around Knott's Berry Farm. So please vote to no. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Our next speaker is James. James, you may unmute your mic.
Members of the new city council, I am James of Woodbridge. Southern California Edison is a corporate monopoly that has dramatically raised electricity rates over the years, and climate change is becoming an increasing threat. And OCPA is the right thing to do to address both of these problems. It is a community choice energy program that provides competition to SCE and is beholden to us, the citizens, instead of wealthy investors. The previous issues with OCPA were addressed through reforms after an audit, something that was only possible because it is community-controlled. When there's problems, we sit on the board. We have control. If SCE had governance issues or was bilking residents, we'd have no recourse. OCPA allows Irvine to contribute to addressing climate change through greater renewable energy purchases than SCE, all the while ensuring we have competition and public control. If Irvine pulls out of OCPA, taking over half of its customers, then it will collapse and leave us at the mercy of SCE, who has no incentive not to jack up rates or to respond to public concerns. Move to basic choice if you must, but Irvine must choose a future of competition, community control, and sustainable energy, not a future of monopolized investor control and pollution. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Our next speaker is Marcy. Oh, Marcy, you may unmute your mic.
Hi, thank you for calling on me. Yeah, I, like many other people today, want to just say that I'm in support of OCPA. I was glad when the communication came, giving us an opportunity to opt in. And even though I knew it was going to be more expensive, I'm a big supporter of the environment, and I wanted there to be a choice. I think that as a longtime Irvine resident, I want to have choices for my energy. And I did not like the fact that this was so rushed. And if the board does want to take the time to evaluate Irvine's participation in the OCPA, I think that's great, but I don't think it should be so rushed. And I'm also a big supporter of Irvine's Climate Action Plan. And as I understand it, we are behind in our goals, and if we pull out of OCPA, this will make us even further behind. So in conclusion, I want to be able to look out and know that I stood up for what was right and that I supported our environment in being as successful and as healthy as possible for ourselves and our children. So please do whatever you can to continue to support OCPA. It's a step in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Our next speaker is Casey Gallagher. Casey, you may unmute your mic.
Good evening. My name is Casey Gallagher. I'm a lifelong Orange County resident with a degree in environmental studies. I also am a young person who cares about seeing a livable future for my generation and the ones that follow. That being said, I'm against the city of Irvine's potential withdrawal from OCPA because it is a backward step for climate progress. OCPA is the first agency of its kind in Orange County, and withdrawing participation would eliminate Irvine and other cities' chances of utilizing more renewable energy sources and having agency in selecting a provider. This would be the case because Irvine comprises over 60% of OCPA's customer base. Thus, withdrawal will be detrimental to the agency as a whole and a blockade to positive climate action throughout Orange County, not just in Irvine. I know that the concern of pricing has been raised, so I would also like to point out the fact that SoCal Edison does not care about us. As a Wall Street-backed energy monopoly, they will continue to raise rates as they have by over 90% over the past 10 years, and there is quite simply nothing that the city of Irvine can do about that. Quite frankly, I do not see any reason that Irvine should pull out of OCPA, and I would find it to be an obnoxiously selfish decision if it were to be carried out. The point of community choice energy is allowing residents to choose their provider, and by withdrawing, you are seeking to eviscerate that agency. Please do the right thing for Orange County and stick with OCPA. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
Our next speaker is Rebecca Jacobson. Rebecca, you may unmute your mic.
Hi, my name is Rebecca. I'm a medical student at UC Irvine. I want to let everyone know that withdrawing from OCPA will negatively impact the health of all of your constituents. There are many climate-related health concerns. I'm seeing in clinics many more heat-related illnesses, heat exhaustion, heat stroke, even death. Changes in air quality, there's a fire right now that we all know about. Prolonged pollen seasons are causing allergies to be much worse for people. Changes in distribution of vector-borne diseases like mosquitoes and things like that are causing different infectious diseases that we've not seen before. And then, of course, mental health of so many young people is being really, really negatively affected. So as a future healthcare professional, I strongly advise not withdrawing from OCPA. $33 a month on a $192 bill, as the council member listed earlier, is a really small, if that is the case, is a really small price to pay for avoiding worse health outcomes in Irvine and maintaining community choice.
Thank you for your comments. Next.
Our next speaker is Sitbear. You may unmute your mic.
Hello. Good evening. As a young resident of Irvine, I realize not everyone at this meeting will be around to experience the worsening effects of climate change, which will affect me for the rest of my life. I do not want my city to contribute to that problem, least of all by removing what? Okay. Oh, you can still hear me. Okay. Least of all by removing choice from the marketplace and restoring a monopoly to a private for-profit corporation. We need to be getting off fossil fuels as soon as possible and making sure the people and their communities take control of the resources as essential to modern life as energy. Withdrawning from the Orange County Power Authority would likely do the opposite, causing the demise of OCPA and returning power over our basic resources to for-profit businesses with only their own interests in mind.
Thank you for your comments.
Our next speaker is telephone number 347. 347, you may unmute your mic.
Yes. Yes, this is De Fox. Kathleen Tracider, you had the chance to turn the OCPA around, and you failed miserably. And why we find ourselves here today. You held back on vital information, and so did the OCPA CEO. You lied to the public by stating that if people joined the OCPA, they would not have to put solar panels on their roofs. You also stated that how nice it would be just to flick a switch and know that you would be getting 100% renewable energy directly into your home or business. We know that's false. The OCPA spends thousands of ratepayer dollars every month on sponsorships, airfare, hotel accommodations, high-end restaurants, and recently paid for a reelection campaign for a city official. But if that wasn't bad enough, the city official wasn't even a board member. All this done behind closed doors and never went before the board. If the OCPA ratepayers only knew half of the abuse this organization is doing with their funds, they would opt out. But they don't because you elect to hide it from them. And you yourself are not even a member of the OCPA, so you have no incentive to act on behalf of the ratepayers. You gave OCPA ratepayer funds of $35,000 to Iain Crations, nonprofit climate action campaign, and who is also your commissioner. Why would a not-for-profit organization give money to another nonprofit and with no accountability? So how about
Thank you, your time is up.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, may I please respond?
Yes, thank you for taking the time to testify. And now, please, Councilmember Tracider, go right ahead.
Okay. Yeah, we've all heard
It has to be brief or else we get into some legal lines here. Go right ahead.
Less than three minutes, correct? Okay. We've all heard Ms. Fox say things like this throughout the past two years. I did notice during the mayor's campaign that Ms. Fox was very closely working with the campaign, it appeared, and was even featured on one of his campaign mailers. And so it does make me wonder. I hope you understand. Do you believe what she says? You've been here with me for two years. You've seen me make a lot of votes and a lot of motions. Have you ever seen me make a vote or a motion that made you think that I was trying to enrich myself? Mayor, would you mind?
I don't want to get into a big back and forth. Let me just say a whole bunch of people have come up and have said some nasty things about me and questioned my motivations and so forth. We're mature enough, I think, as elected officials to understand. We just have to listen and take it with a grain of salt. And I know for a fact that you have done everything you could to represent us, to represent us well, and to try to fix the problems at OCPA.
Thank you.
Let's not question one another's motives at the diocese here. That's really
No, I
We can't control what citizens come up and say. But we can control what we say. I don't question your motives. I hope you don't question mine.
Mayor, I hope you understand why I would be concerned. I'm not questioning your motives. I'm just wondering if you agree with her. And it really helps me a lot. Thank you. It makes me feel a lot better to know that you do not. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, let's keep going. How many do we have left, Carl?
13.
13. Well, that's not too many. Let's go.
Our next speaker is Eric Nishanian. Mr. Nishanian, you may unmute your mic.
Yes, thank you, councilmembers, Mayor Agron. A couple of things. This is not about choice. This is about control. The city gave up control pursuant to the joint powers' authority agreement, and it lost money. And now, OCPA needs more control because they're going to lose money. That's what this is all about. They have to change the goalposts because the game has changed, and they don't know how to play the game, and we got stuck in it. And you guys need to look at what happened to Washington State's CCA. The market changed really quick. They got caught on the contracts they overpaid for, and then they went bankrupt almost immediately. And those reserves that they had didn't mean anything. We need to go. We need to put this letter of intent. We should have done it six months ago, a year ago. I don't always agree with Larry. I haven't agreed with Larry for about 35 years now. But he was right about the OCPA, and his Freedom of Information Acts, I don't think ever were ever responded to fully by the OCPA. And this is a transparency and competency issue. Tracider does want to enrich herself because she considers herself a founder of the OCPA. And she doesn't care about fixing it. She just wants it to remain. And the problem is, if it remains, we're going to lose $7 million. And we may lose more. And if you guys aren't paying attention, she knew about this in September.
Thank you, your time is up.
Thank you, Mr. Nishanian, for your comments.
Our next speaker is Jeremy. Jeremy, you may unmute your mic.
Yeah, hi there. My name's Jeremy. I'm an Irvine resident. First, I just want to say congratulations to Mayor Agron and the new council members on their election. So I hope the council votes no on leaving OCPA. There are plenty of options with the council to take to protect Irvine's interests short of leaving OCPA altogether. For instance, the $7.7 million investment by Irvine will come back to Irvine either in a few years with interest or now, if the council chooses, we would lose one seat on the board. There's no threat of that $7.7 million being lost. There is great potential cost savings with OCPA, so let's see this through. Let's let the market play itself out. Let the voters and residents decide whether or not this will survive. Let's not stop this prematurely. Also, lastly, OCPA can be one of Irvine's many great sources of pride as a regional climate leader. So again, let's not shoot ourselves in the foot and pull the plug prematurely. A letter of intent to withdraw would be a death knell for OCPA. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Figaro, for your comments. Next.
Our next speaker is Lisa Ryder. Lisa, you may unmute your mic.
Good evening, Mayor Agron and councilmembers and staff. I'm Lisa Ryder, and I manage the Irvine Green Business Program for the city. I want to thank the mayor for speaking at a recognition event in October at Cortina Inoteca. At the event, you may recall, we recognized 17 Irvine businesses for achieving a wide range of environmental best practices and earned recognition for their accomplishments. best practices and earned recognition for their accomplishments. We also provide technical assistance and financial incentives to the businesses to get certified. The reason I'm speaking tonight is because one of the requirements to be a certified green business, which is part of a state program, is subscribing to a hundred percent renewable energy through your local CCA, Community Choice Aggregate, like OCPA. Something California Edison only offers about their, their regular rate, which is really the only option. There's no option for fifty or even a hundred percent renewable energy. So with SCE, you only are offered thirty, thirty-five to thirty-seven percent renewables through just their standard rate. So we have over sixty-five certified businesses in Irvine, and they are some of the largest, most prestigious businesses in Irvine, such as Hyundai, Panasonic, Taco Bell and Tilly's headquarters. And we also have many small retailers and offices, as well as even home businesses. So we're really trying to help all businesses in Irvine. Our green businesses, especially the large ones, want to have the hundred percent...
Thank you, your time is up.
Okay. Anyway, the point is, that is part of the program to have, to require the hundred percent option. And that would really affect the program. So I just want to say, please, if at all possible, work out the issues with OCPA. And I think our businesses really want that, to have that option. So thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Our next speaker is Jen Chow. Jen, you may unmute your mic.
Hi, my name is Jen Chow. I'm an Irvine resident, a small business owner, and a mom raising two kids here. I believe Irvine has the potential to lead the nation as a green city others aspire to emulate. While OCPA had early missteps, I've seen real improvements in transparency. Based on the annual joint rate comparison notice I recently received, the rates now look competitive. Given this progress, I believe the demand for clean energy through OCPA in Irvine will only grow. Hearing the city manager's report, it seems like there are still issues in terms of OCPA. I would encourage the council to use its influence to push for reforms while staying in OCPA. By staying with OCPA, we support the quality of life that families in Irvine love and expect: clean air, a healthy environment, and a sustainable future for our children. Supporting renewable energy is a critical part of what I hope will be this council's legacy: establishing Irvine as a beacon of sustainability in Orange County and in the nation. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, Mr. Peterson.
Our next speaker is Catherine Chain. Catherine, you may unmute your mic.
Good evening, Mayor Agron and state councilmembers. Two days ago, I provided, or two years ago, I did a public comment at a special meeting on December twenty-eighth to discuss Irvine's withdrawal from OCPA. I was a senior at Portola High School then, and now two years later, I'm here commenting as a U.C. freshman studying molecular and environmental biology, as again, a special meeting was called to discuss Irvine's role within OCPA. I'm concerned about this Russia terms to withdraw from OCPA, especially given that our new state council was recently elected. I understand that concerns over the OCPA's lack of transparency, and thank you, Mr. Trecider and Dr. Trecider, as well as Doc and the school have worked to keep us residents up to date on these matters. The special meeting format deliberately excludes working families and students like myself, who care deeply about our city's top line and sustainable future. Withdrawing from OCPA would force all Irvine residents back to SoCal Edison monopoly, where rates have increased twenty percent in the past decade, and depletes residents the choice of supporting clean energy. With everything else presented to us, I am sure that we can all agree that OCPA is far from perfect, but a big crucial step forward for a clean energy future. I believe that we should work and advocate for our city to hold control over its energy future, other than being at the mercy of a Wall Street-owned facility that prioritizes shareholder profits over community gain. Irvine especially has invested millions of dollars and received grant funding that can be used to lower rates, fund transit programs, and create battery storage for residents. Why would we want to keep...
Thank you, your time is up.
Thank you for your comments.
Our next speaker is Karen Nguyen. Karen, you may unmute your mic.
Four. I encourage Irvine to stay in the OCPA. OCPA provides affordable, clean, green energy to Irvine residents. Let me tell you, I have driven around the streets of Irvine on a mission to find the most magical Christmas wonderland neighborhood. And think about all the energy that it takes to inflate Santas and Penguins, all the energy it takes to keep Red and Dus moving and Snowflake spinning, all the energy it takes to light up our houses in warm, bright, and sparkling lights. I know that everyone here loves their outdoor Christmas decorations and celebrating the holidays with loved ones. Please keep electricity affordable and green so we can keep spreading sustainable Christmas cheer. Please stay in OCPA.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Peterson.
Our next speaker is Andrea. Andrea, you may unmute your mic.
Hello. Good evening and welcome, new councilmembers and Mayor Agron. I would like to share my personal experience with OCPA. I'm a big believer in green energy. I purchased solar panels about a year and a half ago for, for my home. When, when I did this, I wasn't given a choice to join OCPA, but rather forced into it. After a year, I did save up about a hundred to two hundred dollars in energy versus SCE. However, I spent about an average of thirty to forty dollars per month paying OCPA to, to take the energy from my solar panels and place that energy into the grid, while not receiving credit for the energy that my panels were producing. Now, it's taken me about eight months to get out of OCPA and move back to SCE. While I believe in green energy, I also believe in transparency. And we, the consumer, are not getting that transparency from the OCPA. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Our next speaker is Samsung SM. You may unmute your mic.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Great, thank you. My name is Katie Wright. I'm a Fountain Valley resident. And I go to the podium a lot in Fountain Valley as a public speaker. On December third, I went there, as did Vicki Johnson. And one other public commenter talking about a safety issue, but Vicki and I were both talking about how we don't like Fountain Valley going into agreement with OCPA. I'm like a broken record on that. Oddly enough, Joe Moska was there in the audience. He was standing right behind Vicki during the meeting. But he had plenty of time, he had plenty of opportunity to get up there with his three minutes that he was entitled to. He had nothing to say. He was there and he had nothing to say. Why was he there? He wasn't there to give any presentation. It was where our mayors did the changing of the guard. So I kind of wonder, maybe he was there to go to the party that was being held. Our new mayor, Ted Bowie, was having a private party at Los Cab. And I understand Andrew D. Giovanni, the CCA president, was at that party. So I kind of get this really bad, not warm, fuzzy, happy feeling about the management of OCPA. And I think you're on the right track. All you're asking for is some time to revisit this. God bless you. Thank you. And congratulations again on everybody winning your seats. Thank you. Goodbye.
Thank you for your comments.
Our next speaker is telephone number three six zero. Three six zero, you may unmute your mic. Three six zero, can you hear us? Our next speaker is telephone number zero four four. Zero four four, you may unmute your mic.
Hello. This is Christina Shay, former mayor of the city of Irvine. And I want to thank Larry Agron for your new election appointment, and very proud of you to be sitting in that center seat. I'm also very pleased that you brought this forward. It was not your idea, it was required. And the comments that are being made about this was done too soon, we have a deadline at twelve thirty, twenty twenty-four, that this needs to be discussed. And so next week is just before the holidays, and no one will be able to come. So I believe this was a time and choice that you made to make it more open and transparent to the public, and I thank you for doing that. Also, I want to say the city of Irvine, for several years, has been paying one million more for our city facilities using OCPA. That, that is just unconscionable, in my opinion. So moving forward, I think we need to host a few meetings. We need to approve this concept to be leaving OCPA. I know at the end, if we don't want to do that, they will allow us to stay in. They don't want us to leave. They owe us seven million dollars. And I think that's totally appropriate that we get that money back. But I think it's important that we look to hire a professional environmental legal team to come before this city, maybe have a couple of meetings this coming year, and have a very full, robust discussion. Because there's just so many numbers and concepts out there that don't make any sense to me, and I think a lot of other people...
Could you just let her continue for a moment? Go ahead.
Oh, yes. Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. So I would just suggest that would be a very good approach. And let me just quickly say that I brought forward the non-toxic pesticide program in the city of Irvine with the help and support of our residents. If you want to really understand how to heal, heal the environment, watch the movie Kiss the Ground. Because our program is in our open space, our green belts, and also in our parks. And by implementing this program, the non-toxic pesticide program, you are going to be healing the environment and our air quality. Thank you so very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Our next speaker is Sarab. Sarab, you may unmute your mic.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Oh, perfect. Thank you.
Sarab, are you there?
I think we lost him. Let's try on the next.
It sounded like we got him back. We'll try again. Sarab, you may unmute your mic.
Hello, sorry. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Oh, my God. I'm so sorry about my connection. I'm here to speak against measure two point one. I think giving all of Irvine's power needs to SoCal Edison is a recipe for disaster. And I don't see a real good reason to leave OCPA when it's providing us with renewable energy. If you've seen the rates that SoCal Edison has been hijacking and stealing from, from their customers for the last ten years, it's astronomical. It's ninety percent up. So I don't see that as a unconscionable decision. And I'm here to echo the voices of the many young people who have come here today to stand up against this private meeting that nobody knows about, where you want to strip people of a public good. All right. So I'm here to speak against two point one. I want to stay in OCPA. I'm not going to drag it out. That's my position. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Our next speaker is Emel Alkala. Emel, you may unmute your mic.
Good evening. I want to thank you, Mayor, for bringing, bringing this forward. And I wanted to actually speak to some of the comments that were made by De Fox and the former mayor Shay. She's correct. Both of them are correct. I want my representative from District One to please opt out of OCPA. I was never given a choice to opt in. And I feel like I, I had to do the work to opt out. That is not correct. I never asked for it. There's no such thing as renewable energy, a hundred percent renewable energy. There seems to be a lot of assumptions and not a lot of facts. And for Ms. Trecider to constantly always attack somebody else when somebody says something to her and to ask the mayor she did, that's just not professional, ma'am. You really need to know that. And for those people who are, who are new to the city council, sitting on there, please don't take her as your example of good leadership. Good leadership is Mayor Larry, because he is giving everybody their right, is being respectful and being professional. I thank you so much, sir, for your kindness and for your professionalism and listening to everybody, even when you don't agree. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you for your comments.
Our next speaker is Anker P. Anker, you may unmute your mic.
Hi, thank you for this opportunity. I urge councilmembers and the mayor to stay in OCPA, because it's the fastest and most direct route to getting renewable energy for everyone. We have to meet our sustainability goals as a city, and there's no way we can do that without OCPA. Going back to SCE would not allow residents an option for renewable energy, especially since SCE does not offer new enrollment in their green rate. OCPA is cheaper and offers renewable energy at a far higher rate than SCE does. There's no way we can reach our sustainability goals without OCPA. Please stay within OCPA.
Thank you for your comments.
Our next speaker is Sarah Ree. Sarah, you may unmute your mic.
Hello? Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Oh, yes. Well, I want to kind of clarify a few things, because I've been following up on the city council meeting for quite some time. The Irvine is not green because suddenly we have OCPA. It's green because somebody was there to fight for us and make sure that it's green for decades. And I really, really thank you for Mayor Larry Agron for that. OCPA charged only Irvine, out of all the cities that initially joined OCPA, seven million dollars. No, no other city was charged to join. So something was off from the beginning, which they didn't disclose in the beginning. We only found out about a month ago. It's been, become a vehicle for extreme corruption. I mean, thirty-five thousand dollars for a friend of Trecider to receive that. I think it's despicable. And anytime somebody actually brings it up and tries to hold Trecider accountable, she constantly points finger at someone else. And that type of childish behavior, please stop it. And I do want to thank the resident Andrea, who did speak tonight, despite the fact that she was entirely disrespected. Last time she was in the council meeting, Trecider refused to look at her own constituent for three minutes straight. OCPA also, I looked at the rate, other than the very basic rate, it charges more than SCE in all other tiers. This is not acceptable, even in free market, whatever the capital...
Thank you, your time is up. Thank, thank you for your comments this evening.
Our next speaker is Buzz McCord. Buzz, you may unmute your mic. Hello, Buzz, can you hear us? Our next speaker is Dane Carstens. Dane, you may unmute your mic.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Hi. Just want to strongly urge us to remain in OCPA and vote against item two point one. Climate change is not a new issue. We've known about this since before Star Wars: The New Hope came out. OCPA is Irvine's chance to do something about it. And therefore, we should stay in it. Sunlight is the best disinfectant. Somebody mentioned Larry using a Freedom of Information Act to uncover financial impropriety, something he would not be able to get away with at the private company SCE. Therefore, I urge us to remain in a public organization and stay in OCPA. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. How many more, Mr. Peterson?
We have four more. Our next speaker is Craig Preston. Craig, you may unmute your mic.
Hello, Mayor Agron and City Council. Craig Preston in Costa Mesa, California, a neighbor. And thank you for being a leader in climate action. I've been following this process of joining a CCA for many years now, and so proud that Orange County has become a home of a CCA, where, where the last county on the coast of California to do it. There's twenty-two other CCAs around California that are providing those, that choice for residents. I would like to have that. My city is in the process of having a study done to join, hopefully next year. And Stanton just devoted to join and finish their study. So we are in process of building OCPA, and I'm hoping you stay in. Please consider the economics of it. I'm an accountant by day and activist by night, and I wanted to mention that because we've been successful of getting people to recognize the urgency of climate action, they have chosen a hundred percent renewable or chosen to stay. And I would like to go there, but SCE won't let me because their list is full, and they have a long waiting list that never seems to end. So congratulations to the gentleman that spoke earlier that's on that program, but it is no longer available to new people coming in. OCPA would offer that to me, but I can't get there yet. But I hope to soon. Please consider that my niece and nephew will benefit from this as we clean up our energy, clean up our energy system. Sooner the better, so we can all have cleaner air. Please stay in OCPA. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next.
Our next speaker is telephone number three six zero. Three six zero, you may unmute your mic.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Great. As city councilmembers, each of you have a fiduciary responsibility to protect your citizens of Irvine from financial disarray. Common sense and financial wherewithal dictate you withdraw from OCPA. Organizations like OCPA is an attempt by government to take over your electric utility services without your permission, to force you to buy renewable energy at much higher prices. Why are there only... Why are there only nine CCAs like OCPA in the United States or only nine states? And the reason they're only in nine states is they're not successful, inadvertently prices rise and they're also not for profit. So if there's any kind of financial shortfall, guess who's going to pay for that? The citizens of Irvine and Buena Park. So many people have opted out of this program and the only way they got people to join is by having you opt out or they automatically opted you in. It was disingenuous, it's a phony green new deal. And all of you should be, if you're so concerned about pollution, why are we building thousands of new homes in Irvine? That's the real cause of pollution, traffic, asthma, et cetera. That's where your focus should be. No new homes, no new pollution in Irvine. The disingenuousness of this council is unbelievable.
Thank you, your time is up. Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is telephone number 768. 768, you may unmute your mic. 768, can you hear us?
Hello, city council members. My name is Kevin from College Park, Deirdre, and thank you for letting us speak today to vote your vote and hearing the opinions of fellow Irvine residents and residents from around Orange County who depend on OCPA to deliver a cheaper and more renewable energy option than Southern California Edison provides. I live in Irvine and I love that OCPA gives me the option to choose where my energy comes from and at what price point. Pulling out of OCPA will not only take away my place, my neighbor's choice, but also the choices of all the other residents from around the county. A letter of withdrawal, the most radical option, is irreversible and once withdrawn drawing, we cannot use that as a negotiation tool for better rates with Southern California Edison. Over the past 10 years, SoCal Edison has raised electric rates by 90% and continues to offer the minimum amount of clean energy to customers. I strongly urge all of you to vote to stay in OCPA, keep Irvine a leader in cheaper renewable energy in Orange County. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Mayor, with your indulgence, if I could try Buzz McCord again? I think he was having some technical difficulties. Mr. McCord, you may unmute your mic.
Hi.
Hi.
Roy McCord, Huntington Beach. I have deep roots in Irvine starting nearly 40 years ago as professor at IBC, founding two academic science programs and three vocational tech programs. Recently I learned that we have happy news expecting our first grandchild, which made me think about what I told each of over 10,000 community college astronomy students. We don't own Spaceship Earth, we only borrow it from our children. You and I have been careless borrowers. Our children's climate is warning. We don't, but you don't have to believe me, study the insurance business, a one and one-half trillion dollar industry radically changing policies right in front of us. Because they know climate change is a threat and so do the majority of Americans, especially young people. In a volatile community like Irvine, you have heard over and over tonight that people are hungering to do whatever they can personally to ward off the climate change demon. Community choice energy is the best hope for all of us out here to do something big to avoid an overheated future. My unborn granddaughter deserves more than lame excuses. It's time for us old grumpy folks to stand down on climate. Please reject the letter of withdrawal, vote to leave us a choice and some hope. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
I am Cration.
Is this the final?
Final speaker, yes.
Thank you.
Welcome and you're able to wrap it up is?
Thank you, yes, thank you so much. I'm batting cleanup because I brought slides, that's the punishment apparently. So good evening, council members and staff, congratulations to you all on your election. I and many others, just by way of introduction, worked for many years as volunteers to create what is now the Orange County Power Authority. And I just wanted to respond to some of the comments. I'm really proud to work for a wonderful climate nonprofit that did get a grant from OCPA, but I certainly did not see that money myself. I think we need to be clear about the consequences of this decision. I wanted to share this slide from the Public Advocates Office, which is an entity within the CPUC that is tasked with advocating for the interests of ratepayers. And so according to them, SoCal Edison has increased rates for Irvine families 90% over the last 10 years and 51% in the last three years. And so the choice to withdraw tonight would certainly force this change on and take away the choice for all Irvine residents forever and leave them with no choice but SoCal Edison. So we want to be clear about that. And then also, I wanted to point out that yes, SoCal Edison has reported net earnings last year of $1.2 billion with a B and that is paid for by Irvine ratepayers. And so it's very important for residents to have this choice and for any reforms that are desired by the city to be advocated for certainly, but to maintain the choice.
Thank you, your time is up.
So the city can get back its investment.
Why don't we grant you just a few more seconds to go ahead and wrap things up?
Thank you so much. I had one more slide just very briefly to show, because I know Mayor Agron, you really respect the Solar Rights Alliance and you've had them here in this chamber to talk about the benefits of solar, which is really important and something actually that SoCal Edison has worked consistently to undermine. And so this is an illustration that they shared on their social media last year to underscore the harms of investor-owned utilities, in particular SoCal Edison, with regard to our solar rights and to show that they have taken a lot of action to undermine solar policy in the state. And community choice energy programs, including the OCPA, allow people to maintain access to NEM 2.0, which will allow our solar dreams to come true here in Irvine. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Cration, for your comments. I understand we have one final Zoom participant. Yes, Mr. Mayor, from Kent Morris. All participation now is closed out beyond this. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Morris, you may unmute your mic.
Hi, my name is Kent Morris, longtime resident of Fullerton, retired college professor. I hope you do not withdraw from OCPA. I earnestly ask you to give people a choice and preserve democracy. Thank you very much for listening.
And that is on there. Thank you for your final comment, Mr. Morrison. And with that, we've concluded public participation. We have a couple of procedural choices, I want to be kind to my colleagues here. We could take a very brief recess now and then resume with the balance of the agenda or we can continue forward. I just want to be considerate of those who are sitting here listening, recognizing we have still a fair amount of work to do. Go forward, go forward, all right. Here we go. At this time, we will entertain additional council comment, including presumably at some point, a motion or series of motions to take action of one kind or another. So I see here requests that are in the queue, first from Councilmember Carol, followed by Councilmember Treceder. Councilmember Carol.
Great, thank you, Mayor, appreciate that. And first, I just want to thank really all the public commenters, both online and in person tonight, or this afternoon, moving into tonight on an issue that has been talked about a lot and is a multi-year matter that we've been dealing with as a city and as a JPA, Joint Powers Agency, finding with other cities. I also want to just thank Susan Sani, I'm not sure if Councilmember Sani's here, but for her to come and I think that was really admirable and I really appreciated her being here on behalf of the agency. Yes, I was one of the people that brought the Orange County Power Authority to life. And yes, also two years ago at this time of the year, I was in a different position and that position, colleagues, was in a position saying that if we don't do something, which in that case at that time was the issuance of a notice of intent to withdraw, not an actual withdrawal, but a legal notice that we intend to do so to create leverage and create a situation to negotiate. And I believe the quote I left everyone with at that special meeting was that we as Irvine are going to be left holding the bag, not necessarily with respect, only with respect to our over $7.5 million of money that we put up, but also perhaps with the implosion of the thing. Here we are again on the same issue, two years hence. We had new management, we had new board, you know, there were a lot of accusations that flew. I was reminded or I was told about the phrase that I guess was coined by Napoleon hundreds of years ago in French, but the English translation is "all revolutionaries devour their young." And is the only person that probably spent, I can't even, I can't really express how many hundreds of hours I spent trying to make this work, including some really interesting and fulsome and thoughtful conversations with our mayor about whether we could come to a situation where we could get this thing to go. The revolutionaries had devoured their young and there's not enough time to talk about what that is all about. I'm happy to have individual and group conversations about that. I'm really more excited in concluding my comments very briefly and to hear what my new colleagues truly have to say about this. But I, it's just one of these things that the best thing I could say is, without getting into, you know, back and forth or litigating the matter, is I thought long and hard about what this is and to me, this is best described in two words. It is a noble failure. It is a noble failure because it does not, now as the agency comes and seeks that this city now reduce the things that we put in place, 100% clean energy to basically nil or close to nil, is an evisceration, a complete withdrawal of the reasons of why you would do the Orange County Power Authority to band together. And again, I'm happy to have separate conversations with my colleagues here and really anyone in the public and we can respectfully agree to disagree or agree together, but I, after a while, came to the conclusion that the idea that other large municipalities had put up no risk capital and we had put all the risk capital in, never really sat well with me after a period of time after it kept going. So again, that's kind of where I'm at on it. I would ask my colleagues to not think that this is a one-sided, one side of the political spectrum versus the other side. Everyone up here and I know everyone in that audience, including from the younger folks with the yellow signs to some of the older folks, are all California coastal residents, we're all incredibly massively invested in protecting this environment for now and for the future. I'm not sure this is the way and the format with which to do it. I thought that it was a few years ago. And with that, as I close in on my five minutes, I am really feeling that, you know, we probably need to move in the direction that protects the Irvine residents. And I would also note that we have a lot of speakers, a lot of speakers are not from Irvine, our job is to basically exercise our duties for Irvine. I appreciate the speaker from Laguna Beach, but you know, that Laguna Beach, I know, I had 35 hours of conversations with the council members and the mayor of Laguna Beach three years ago to get them in.
Councilmember Carol, your time is up?
If I may.
Yes, Councilmember Carol.
Thank you. And I would say that, you know, the time for, you know, places outside of Irvine to tell Irvine what to do, at least for this council member, that ship has sailed. And again, just real briefly, Mayor, if I may, the withdrawal process started on day one, the city of Lake Forest, which was, I think, either a split city or a Republican city decided to withdraw, followed by the county of Orange, which was a Democrat-controlled entity, supervisors then withdrew, and then Huntington, which I guess was Republican, decided to withdraw. So it's really, it's not really a party or a political or an ideology issue. It's to me, what's best for Irvine issue and I won't have any further comments. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for your comments. Councilmember Treceder.
Thank you. I really appreciate all the public commenters, thank you so much for sharing your views. I want to, in this round, respond a bit to issues that the commenters brought up. So one is financial stability of OCPA. OCPA is in great financial shape. So we are projected to have by the end of this fiscal year about $71 million in our reserves. So we feel really good about this. When I got the news that we would need to opt down in order to maintain our current prices, I was not concerned. This is, I think, common in the electricity industry. Even if Irvine did nothing and we just kept things as they are, we didn't opt down and we kept the price the same, we would eat into our reserves, we would reduce the reserves to about 15% of our operating costs. The $71 million would be 26%. So we'd be lowering our reserve from 26% to 15%. That's not the end of the world, we would be okay. I just don't like that kind of risk to have the reserve be that low. So that's one of the reasons that I support opting down and I'm not concerned about OCPA's financial stability. We also, when I came on board, and by the way, I do really appreciate Councilmember Carol and his efforts to found OCPA and get it off the ground. He worked really hard on it, really believed in it. So when I came on the board, we were just finishing getting audited, we got audited by the county, the OC grand jury and the state. And each of those audits found issues, various issues with the agency that they recommended that we improve. The state was requiring us to make the changes and they needed to certify that we did. We put together, of all the issues that the auditors found, we put together a 24-point improvement plan. And we went through each of those points and made those improvements. We invited the state to come back and check to see if we had actually made those changes. The state had the legal authority to step into the CEO's shoes so they could access all the accounts and all the information that the CEO had. They gave us a clean bill of health and they certified that we have met the audit requirements. I also want to touch on the $7.5 million. I, yeah, Mr. Chi knows that I disagree with him on his interpretation of OCPA agendizing, giving this $7.5 million back to Irvine. I believe it was a good faith response to Councilmember Carol's and some of the other comments from the past council about how they would want that back. I think that they were trying to be helpful and show that they were responsive. I don't, I don't think it was an attempt to reduce our representation on the board, but of course, I can't know for sure. So I hope that this helps a bit with some of the comments and I'll wait to hear what my other colleagues think. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Treceder. Councilmember Mai.
Yes, thank you so much. I believe that there are solutions that are needed and that there is legitimate concerns about the environment. I'm not a big fan of monopolies either. I don't know if this is really the right place for it, but in consideration for the many commenters, thank you for spending four hours with us here. It's my second day on the job, but I enjoyed it with you guys.
Sure.
In consideration to the commenters, in consideration to the ratepayers, to the people of Irvine, to the families and to the protection of Irvine, I move that the city of Irvine take the following actions. Number one, reduce the default OCPA energy tier for the city of Irvine residents and businesses to the basic choice level. Number two, complete withdrawal from the OCPA pursuant to a notice in the form and to the parties required by Section 6.1.2 of the Orange County Power Authority Joint Powers Agreement to be provided by the city manager to OCPA in 2025. In the meantime, direct that the Irvine directors on the OCPA board take all steps necessary to protect the interests of the city of Irvine and customers within the city of Irvine as they relate to the operations, management, finances and ongoing existence of OCPA and report back regularly to the Irvine City Council as to the status of reforms being instituted at OCPA.
Does that conclude your motion? Does that conclude your motion?
That concludes my motion.
I'll call for a second. Is there a second?
I'll second that, Mayor.
That's a motion by Councilmember Mai and a second by Councilmember Carroll, and of course, we'll have discussion on the motion. Is it, is the motion in writing? Do we have that motion in writing? Can we, can we put it up for people to see? This is the first I've heard it. No? I'll tell you what, I'm going to suggest we take a literally no more than 10-minute recess. We can get squared away technically with the motion up for everybody to see. The second point in particular, I want to ask some questions and address, and we can do that in 10 minutes. Yes, Councilmember Lou? Councilmember Lou asked that the recess be limited to five minutes. I think I can do that. There we go. We're in recess until 8:15. We do want to thank you, everybody who has attended tonight. We also want to thank all of those who have participated. Just to review where we are, we've taken, we've had a presentation on this item by our city staff. We have had very ample public comment. We had an earlier round of city council comments and discussion. We're now at the point where we're having another round of discussion, comment, and as it turns out, we have a motion properly in front of us. I think this would be an appropriate time for another round of discussion by council members, responding, I hope, to the motion, perhaps directing questions to city staff, to the proponent of the motion, and further discussing this to the point where we will get to a vote. So with that, the motion now available for everyone to see. Will people at home be seeing this as well?
They will have the ability to see it, yes.
Excellent. With that, I'm prepared to take another round of comments, beginning with Councilmember Treseder, and then maybe moving down the line, whatever. Go ahead.
All right, thank you. I appreciate Councilmember Mai's motion. I am considering this. I want to share a bit about some of the challenges that I have been facing with OCPA in the past five weeks since I've learned that we needed to, to opt down. And I want to emphasize that I think overall OCPA is run well. But this past five weeks, so first of all, I didn't get very much notice about this. So I learned on November 5th about the need to opt down and was told that we needed to opt down by December 31st. In my mind, that is not enough time to contemplate it. I did agendize it as soon as I could, and I'm glad that we could discuss it at a recent council meeting. In that five weeks since I learned about this, I've, I've had a difficult time getting concrete information from OCPA about the details involved. It's been like pulling teeth, and at times, you know, my frustration is scale one to 10, 10, been at a 10 many times this past five weeks. I don't know exactly why I'm having trouble getting concrete information. We did have a recent OCPA board meeting. I don't know if any of you watched it. It was, I think, pretty representative of what I've been experiencing. At the board meeting, I was asking that Irvine get better notice in the future. So, you know, next year, I don't want to be in this position, I don't want to be in this position. Two years after that, we need time to contemplate these changes, and this council especially. We are very invested in OCPA. We have people who think very strongly about it, one way or another, and it's important that we discuss these things. And so, yeah, this has been less than ideal, and I do get the sense from the last board meeting, from comments from one of the board members, that he actually would prefer not to give Irvine information because he said that we might overreact to it. I think that the way that we react to information is up to us. I don't, I don't think it's anybody else's call to say that we're overreacting or underreacting. We react as we feel is good for our city. And I've been having a tough time making informed decisions because I don't have this concrete information. It's very important to me to, when I make votes up here or votes on the board, that I know what's going on. And so this has been a problem. I do not want this to continue with OCPA. I don't know the source of it. It might just be one or two personalities, but it can't continue. We need to be regarded and treated at least as equals. We do have the majority of the accounts, we do have the majority of the renewable energy that's going through, and we definitely need to be involved, we need to be getting information. And so I, thinking about this motion, I'm thinking about, is, would this help us as representatives of Irvine on the OCPA board? Would this help us better advocate for our residents' interests if, if we're thinking about this motion as we do, as we go forward in the next year? And I, I think it might. I don't, I don't know what else to do at this point. Yeah, at times, just insisted, insisted, ordered. Sorry?
Wait, hold, hold on, hold on, Councilmember Treseder. Please, no comments from the audience at this point? Thank you.
Yeah, I've insisted, I've ordered, it doesn't, it doesn't really matter. So it might be that it would be helpful to have something for, behind us as we are talking on the board as representatives of Irvine, and I do really care a lot about these residents, I want to serve them well. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else? Councilmember Lou?
So just to...
It took me two or three meetings to figure out how to press the right button at the right time, but if you want to be recognized now, I'm happy to do so.
So just to add a little comment on that, there are a lot of commenters spoke about the fact that they were forced into it, just, I encourage everyone to look up the CCA law, IB 117 of 2002, which requires an automatic enrollment for any city that creates a CCA, and then also give residents the notice to opt out. So that is why that was set up the way it was. And so that could be an issue about communications, which, you know, hopefully it could improve with what we've chosen to do today with OCPA, and I am very cognizant of the fact that we ultimately answer to the city and, and the resident. So with that, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Councilmember Treseder, is your name up again? Would you like to be heard?
Yeah, just very briefly.
Go right, go right ahead.
I just want to make a pitch to opt down to smart choice instead of basic. It's what the OCPA board recommended. I think it, it makes a lot of sense. I'm just hoping my colleagues might consider it. Thank you.
That's 2.1 in the agenda, is that correct, on the motion?
Oh, oh, I see. Yes, one, number one, instead of basic, smart choice, the middle tier. So I'm wondering if any of my colleagues might be interested in making that change, but I'll hear from you. Thank you.
Thank you for making that point. Technical advice, took me several years to learn from Carl that just by pressing the presentation button, you can get the motion right in front of you.
Yeah, thank you, I know, I just wanted to show that I was looking, I wanted people to know, but yeah, I definitely know that. Thank you.
After one or two, after one or two neck injuries, I, I didn't do that.
It only works on your computer.
It only on mine, all right, well, you sure?
Of course.
Okay. Carl might be able to help you with that. Let me maybe offer a few comments of my own at this time. I want us to begin to speak to the motion. Councilmember Treseder offered a suggested change in the motion. Before I get to that, I just want to make a couple of general comments and kind of set the context for what we're doing tonight, what we might do. This special meeting has really kind of been forced upon us. It's not something that we invented. The fact of the matter is, we got something in the form of, maybe it's a little too strong a word, an ultimatum from OCPA, that unless we act, unless we opt down, terrible things are going to happen. And probably that's true. It was OCPA that was hiding the ball here. It's not some trick by the mayor or the council or anybody else. And in point of fact, the swearing in the other night, I took the opportunity, I think, to at that meeting, at least on two occasions, maybe three, point out that we were going to be calling a special meeting for this afternoon, for this purpose. And that's, that's why we're here. I want to again thank all those who showed up. You know, this is an important matter, but there were no ulterior motives here. Although the concept of community choice energy is an attractive one, it's been implemented very successfully elsewhere. As I began to look into it shortly after my election to council in 2020, as I began to look into it in 2021 and study it, it became clear to me that it could work in However, there was tremendous amount of risk in the entire enterprise. And as has been pointed out by one or two other people tonight, that risk ended in disaster in Riverside County just a few years ago, and it could end in disaster here. You know, it's one thing to be involved in commodities trading and investing your own money, risking your own money. We're, we're responsible up here for the people's money, the ratepayers' money. And that's a big, big responsibility. And so when people come forward and say, well, so what, I'm willing to pay $10 more, $20 more, $30 more a month for the same electricity everybody else is getting on a bet that OCPA will somehow translate this into real energy-saving projects, renewable projects that are benefit to the people of the city of Irvine, not just the entire globe like this, but of special benefit to us here in Irvine? This is a very important consideration, and it requires us to be very, very responsible in what we do. I don't think OCPA is in great financial health, to the extent that it's got $70 million in reserves, that's our money. It's there because residents and businesses in the city of Irvine have been paying a premium. We pay the highest electricity rate in the entire county to help support this enterprise called OCPA. And the way I look at it, the volatility in...
Mayor, your time is up.
Thank you, I'm going to grant myself unlimited amounts of extra time. I didn't take any in the first round. To the extent that we put the people's money at risk by being in a commodities market that inherently is very volatile, you know, I consider myself a pretty good investor, very thoughtful investor, but I would never go near the commodities market, never. It's simply something about which it was just too hard for me to wrap around, wrap my head around all the vagaries of that market and what it might mean. And again, it's one thing when you're doing that for yourself, making that choice one way or the other for yourself, but for all the people here in Irvine, to make that choice for them, to take that risk, no. I soured on OCPA pretty early on. Councilmember Treseder and I have disagreed in the sense that, and I've stated this publicly before, she has felt, and I think others feel, OCPA can be fixed. I don't think it can be fixed. I think there's such structural questions in it that suggest to me, we have to begin to move away from OCPA. We have to figure this out, how we disengage, and how we recognize the opportunity costs by investing so much in OCPA, the opportunity costs that we have incurred by not investing in other surefire fossil fuel-reducing, energy-efficient systems. Solar rooftops with batteries. We've struggled to get several hundred homes in Irvine to install solar rooftops, some with batteries, hundreds, a few hundreds. We ought to be ramping that up to the thousands, thousands per year, 50,000 over a period of five to 10 years, to make real change, and real change right here in Irvine, saving people money, contributing to the environmental improvements that we all wish. And by the way, I just want to make it clear, I yield to no one in my commitment to environmental protection and undertaking bold policies at the municipal level that have been mimicked by others around the world. We are environmental leaders here in Irvine. So to the extent that we have taken a wrong turn with OCPA or... So to the extent that we have taken a wrong turn with OCPA, or improperly put down too big a bet on it, we need to make a course correction, in my view. And that's what I think this motion is about. I do want to ask a couple of questions about the motion itself. By the way, not only rooftop solar, I wanted to also mention getting on with our tree planting program, our master plan for forestation, converting our public fleet of vehicles to electrification. All of these things are things that we can and should be doing here in the city of Irvine, and we can accelerate by putting less of our minds and energies and money into OCPA and costing our ratepayers to boot on top of it, extra, extra billings. This presents an opportunity tonight for us. Can I ask a couple of questions about the motion? I do want to speak to number one about reducing the default OCPA energy tier for the city of Irvine residents and businesses. Now, we've already done this for the city. We've saved the city by reducing down to the basic level, $70,000 a month, $60,000 to $70,000 a month, saved by virtue of the fact that we're at the basic level. And we light City Hall and the fields and spend, what, $500,000 to $600,000 a month?
Our annual electrical budget right now is about $10 million a year, so slightly more than that.
This would lower it. I don't think it's 10 million, I think it was about 600,000 a month.
Citywide, the city's total energy costs across all funds, all accounts, great parks, streetlights, city facilities, our budget for the current year is about $10 million total. At the November 26 meeting, the city council voted to move us down to the basic tier, as you just alluded to, Mayor Agren, and that decision saved us $700,000 to $800,000 annually over the course of a year.
There we are. We can plant a lot of trees with that money, we can address other needs as well. The basic choice level for residents and for businesses, that would apply as well to incoming customers, is that correct? If this motion were adopted?
Correct, this would be resetting our base default rate to the level selected by council. It's currently offered up as the basic choice level, which is the 44% renewable rate, which is the lowest cost rate that runs about a percent and a half below what Edison charges.
All right. Having done that for ourselves, which of course represents all the taxpayers in the city of Irvine, it seems to me only logical, fair, and proper to extend that reduced rate by virtue of the reduced tier to all businesses, all residents. Having a higher tier, as councilmember Trecider suggested, for residents and businesses than we have adopted for ourselves as a city, I think that's problematic, at least for me. I want to focus my attention though and get some help from you, as well as possibly from councilmember, councilmember Mai, about the second issue. Withdraw from OCPA pursuant to a notice in the form and to the parties required by section 6.1.2, forgive me, but I can't recall what that is, as if I ever knew in the first place, of the Orange County Power Authority Joint Powers Agreement to be provided by the city manager to OCPA in 2025. Please, speak to this if you would, because I think, if I'm right, it may allay some of the fears that action we take tonight means we're instantly out of OCPA. I don't think that's the case, if I understand this correctly. Is this properly directed?
Certainly.
I, I know you worked with councilmember Mai. If you could collectively elucidate on this point.
Mayor, I would say that's not the case, but I'll defer to our lawyer.
Very well.
So, I'll try and kick it off, Mayor. So, the way that paragraph two is structured, it calls for the provision, sorry about that, it calls for the provision of a notice to withdraw. Calls for a vote to withdraw tonight, but the provision of the notice in 2025. And the net effect of that is that it doesn't, I think as you said, it doesn't cause sort of an immediate unwinding and forced procurement decisions upon OCPA immediately. Rather, it contemplates that that notice will come in 2025, and it's that notice which has to be in writing and has to be delivered to OCPA and to all of the member agencies. It's that notice that then triggers the formal withdrawal process. So, I, I think that is, hopefully that's responsive to your question.
Yes, well, this says withdraw from OCPA. And of course, that's a very strong statement, withdraw. But then when you get into the pursuant to, you realize that it's not immediate withdrawal. It is in fact notification of intention and so forth. It gives us some time and flexibility to perhaps do some repair work and do some of the things that we talked about here in, in the motion in number three, which is, in the meantime, begin to take steps within OCPA to protect the interests of the city of Irvine and customers within the city as they relate to operations, management, finances, and so forth. It gives us some real flexibility and frankly, some leverage to try to move forward effectively. Always focused on the interests of our residents and the customers that in the end foot the bill. Is that a fair restatement of what this is about?
Yes, that is, that's fair. We must protect our ratepayers and put the best interests of our cities first in, in light of the recent actions of OCPA. I believe this is the best action, and this is why this motion exists.
Very well. All right. Councilmember Trecider, your name is up again.
It is.
Well, you're welcome to speak again if you wish.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I'm thinking about this part, number two there. So just to make it clear, we're not going to send anything in right now. We'll send something in sometime in 2025, right? How will we decide if we're going to send it in in 2025 and when? Is it going to be, like, the city manager decides, or the council decides?
I can start and try to address that. Based on the way the motion is constructed, it appears to direct that the city manager that I would at some point in 2025 submit the formal notification to withdraw. The motion though also does say, in the meantime, continue to direct that our representatives to OCPA continue to work through all of the issues to try to create the improvements that I think we've discussed needing to make sure that Irvine is engaged properly at the power authority. To that end, the way that I interpret the motion, I wouldn't be issuing the notice immediately. We would work to see how the discussions between our directors work with OCPA. The motion does say to report back to the city council as to the status of reforms being instituted at OCPA, which implies the need to not issue until there's an opportunity to work through everything. To the point that councilmember Mai made, I think the intention here is to provide the proper incentives to make sure that our representatives to OCPA will respond to our directors that are appointed by Irvine to their agency, take the concerns that we bring forward seriously, and we'll look to see if, if they do act accordingly and really do take into account the opinions of our board members. If that appears to be moving forward well, certainly I think there exists the possibility that the withdrawal is at that point, some point in 2025, before the formal paperwork is submitted, that that could be reconsidered by the city council.
I can see how that could be useful, given the current circumstances, and, and I regret that that is the case, but I, I have to say, I am concerned about my experiences the past five weeks. So I'll think about this, and I'd like to hear, I'm interested to hear if anybody else has anything to say.
Thank you. Are there other comments, discussion? I see no requests. Oh, there we are, councilmember Lou.
Just a quick clarification for item number one, line number one, reduce default to basic choice level, that means for residents who would choose to up for the higher level, they will be able to have that option still.
Yes.
Yes. So, and then about item number two, the timeline is sometime in 2025, so this is not an immediate withdrawal.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further, yes, councilmember Go. We'll do it here.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for your help. Yeah, so, I mean, as you guys know, thanks for coming here and spending the evening with us. We put a lot of time in this. As James, councilmember Mai mentioned, it's our second day, but we've been working on this for quite some time. Melinda and I met with OCPA, we went to their offices, toured it, spent a couple hours asking the questions we needed. I attended the January, or December 6th board meeting in person. It was very, very good to be able to see how they're operating from firsthand. And I just want to thank staff, because in, in my business, I tend to do a lot of this by myself and without the full help of, you know, city attorney Jeff Melching. You guys have been great, you guys do an amazing job helping us out, coming to the right decisions. I just want to confirm, sometime in 2025, if you did rectify the situation and things are going well, I'm a bit of an optimist in that sense compared to Larry, would we then decide not to rescind? And also if, you know, I'm also a realist, if things aren't going well, I do understand that we do have that option. So I just want to clarify both instances and what we would do in either one.
Yes. The intention of the number two, the second part of that motion, the intention really is, city has stated that we're withdrawing, but in the meantime, and that would happen at some point in 2025, but in the meantime, our board representatives to OCPA are directed to continue to work to advance the interests of the city in an attempt to bring back reports regularly to the council, so we know, are we making progress? If the progress is positive, or if it's negative, that decision of whether or not we finalize the process to withdraw, that decision obviously will remain with the city council. If this motion, as put up on the screen, is approved, are delegating that authority to the city manager. In my role though, I wouldn't move forward until there's been an opportunity, certainly, for the council to see if progress is being made.
Thank you, thanks for clarifying.
Thank you. Anything further, councilmember Mai, then councilmember Lou?
Yes, this is to address councilmember Lou, that is true, the, the motion is designed to get us on the default, basic, but any, any resident or anybody can, can opt to go higher if they want. So just for clarification for that. Also in general to this, to this motion, this motion is designed to give the power back to Irvine, to the people. It sends a message that no organization will have the power to bully us or hold or withhold information to us. That's why this motion exists, so I hope you would support it.
Thank you. Councilmember Lou. There we are.
So yeah, I really struggle with this issue, and I recognize that the purpose of the CCA is to give choice, competition, and hopefully bring down the rates and not have a monopoly, and also at the same time have clean energy for our environment. And with that said, ultimately, it is the residents and affordability, so if this agency is not doing what it's supposed to do, this unfortunately would be a hard decision to make. And I would like to note that, a little clarification, do we need to do anything to decide whether we want to pull the trigger and send a letter, or is there, is there anything we need to do beyond this motion?
Similar to how staff operates, if this is approved, what our intention would be, what my intention would be, is coordinate closely with our OCPA representatives initially to understand how the conversations are going. After this motion's been approved by the city council, I would report back regularly to the full council as to the status of any reforms that are occurring. I would say that an offer that I've never met anyone more committed to sustainability issues, and frankly, to OCPA's continued ability to operate well, than councilmember Trecider. I know she's poured so much of herself and her time and energy into trying to reform and turn the, that agency into a successful operation. And I've heard councilmember Trecider tonight articulate her frustration, and the fact that she's considering this matter and considering this motion, given her long history of supporting OCPA, I think should speak to the level of dysfunction and the damage in the relationship that's occurred between the city and the Orange County Power Authority. That being said, if this is approved, again, the question that you asked councilmember Lou, how would we, would there be another action in the city council? What we would do, again, what I would do is understand how the conversations are happening with the city council-appointed members to the OCPA board. That information continually be fed back to the full city council, so everyone's informed as to what our board reps are hearing and seeing. That information, I think, within the next couple of weeks and months will likely provide enough information for the full council to really decide, do you want to continue to give me the authority to finalize the termination and withdrawal, or do you want to ultimately unwind that decision?
All right, councilmember Trecider.
Thank you. Yeah, I would be committed to communicating with this council what my experiences are like with OCPA. I do have time during announcements at each council meeting that I can update the council publicly. I can also keep Mr. Chi informed and Mr. Melching about it. I, in some cases with the Brown Act, I can't talk to more than, you know, a few people here, but I can, I can let Mr. Chi and Mr. Melching know if things come up between the council meetings.
Excellent, excellent. I see no further requests at the dais to be heard, which I believe means we're ready for a, a vote. Let me point out, because several citizens, more than a few, have suggested that we move to a system of voting that is by press- that is by pressing a button and so forth. I don't want to do that for this meeting. We'll have a roll call vote. I do want to ask Mr. Peterson to let folks know what the order is and why it is what it is, as we call the roll, if you could explain that now.
Absolutely. So we do take, when we do a roll call, we do it in alpha order with the mayor always going last. That's per the municipal code. And I'll ask the city attorney to chime in if I missed anything, but I think that's it.
You got it right.
Thank you.
That's it. So unless there are any questions? All right, will the clerk please call the roll on the motion?
Councilmember Carol.
Yes.
Councilmember Go.
Yes.
Councilmember Lou?
Yes.
Councilmember Mai?
Yes.
Councilmember Treceder?
Yes.
Mayor Agron?
Yes.
Carrie Six Zero.
That concludes this matter. Thank you all who participated. And nice to see us working together. Let me just say that. Nice to see us working together. All right. With that, we want to move to a separate issue. We'll now consider the final business item, item number 2.2. Will the clerk please read the title of the item?
Consideration of a request by Mayor Agron to discuss possible updates to the city's existing sign ordinance regulations related to election signs.
Thank you. Those participating via Zoom may now raise their hand electronically to enter the speaker queue.